Please have a seat. Welcome to the July 18th City Council Meeting for Half Moon Bay, California. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
You have a call.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have a very special guest. That guest is Mayor Al Adrevino, who... Mayor Adrevino's... Sit, sit. We're going to talk for just a minute about you. Mayor Adrevino celebrated his 100th birthday yesterday. Can any of you say the same thing? I bet there's not another 100-year-old person in the room. And there probably aren't very many in town. And 100-year-old former mayors timed four times. What an incredible lifetime achievement. You are truly an institution in Half Moon Bay community and have contributed so much to help our charming town grow, but also retain what makes it quaint and beautiful. You have dedicated your life to serving your country and your community. Some of you may not know, Al was drafted to the Army Corps of Engineers and served for three years before returning home on February 14, 1946. That was about 80 years ago, right? Oh.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven, okay. Farming has always been a staple in the Adrevino family. Al grew up on a truck farm in Colma, California. And when he returned from the Army, he started working at a flower nursery, took over the daylight nursery with his father, sold the nursery, and purchased a ranch in Half Moon Bay. Al loved Half Moon Bay, but his one true love was his wife, Ida, who he married on October 4, 1947. They were married for 71 wonderful years. And 24 beautiful days. Al served as mayor of Half Moon Bay in 1970, 1971, 1976, and 1979. In addition to his time in the city council, Al has served on the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, the Coastside County Water District, San Mateo County Farm Bureau, Half Moon Bay Chamber, Northern California Flower Growers and Shippers Association, the California State Association of Florists, Our Lady of the Pillar Parish Council, and the Knights of Columbus. Good grief. That's amazing. That's amazing. We have truly accomplished so much, Al, and your legacy lives on in Half Moon Bay through your children, grandchildren, and all the wonderful projects that you have touched throughout the years. Let's give him one more round of applause. We have a proclamation which I'd like to present to you, Al.
At this point, I don't know what to say. Earlier in the evening, I asked the mayor, you know, how do I address you? I says, do I address you as Madam Mayor? I says, but the terminology Madam brings a bell to me that I don't like. So she thought for a minute, she says, well, Your Honor will do. Thank you, Your Honor. You know, this comes to me as a total surprise when we first heard that the city wanted to do something for me. And I've been trying to think of what to say, and I never was much of a public speaker, but I'm still at a loss for words. But I do want to say thank you to the city council for, you know, for this honor. It's really something. And to go one step further, I'm glad I served on the council when I did. Not today. We had our problems then, one of which was no money. And Naomi can attest to that because she was working for the city at that time, too. And every time she come up with a project, I'd look at her and say, Naomi, how much is it going to cost? And she would give us a price, and I say, sorry, Naomi, we don't have any money. That was for the Park and Recreation Commission. So, you know, we had our trials and tribulations with the Border Quality Control Board. I was on the council when, in fact, I was mayor when SAM was organized. That's something that we fought tooth and nail to get what it is today. And no, it's not the best thing we've ever done, but it was the best we could do at the time. We had, you know, we went around, in fact, the other day, we were driving through El Granada, and a fellow I was with asked me if I knew a certain person. I says, oh, yes. I says, he was a jerk that was on a committee to form SAM. I don't want to mention any names. But at any rate, like I said, I'm glad I served when I did. And I can, you know, when I read in the paper what you people have to go through, I feel for you. Believe me, I feel for you. Thank you.
All righty, Cameron Palmer. I'll kick this thing off. Al, he is a Coastside hero to me. You are such a good man. You left a couple things off, Mayor. He was on the Coastside Water District for 12 years. He was on the Planning Commission and Chair of that for seven years. He was also, most people don't know this, he was the founding member of the Half Moon Bay Great Pumpkin Wayoff. And let me tell you how that happened. At the time, we in Half Moon Bay declared ourselves the pumpkin capital of the world. But apparently, in Circleville, Ohio, they also claim themselves as pumpkin capital of the world. So Al got a pretty ingenious idea. We would have a wayoff with Circleville, Ohio. And of course, this is way before the Internet and all that kind of stuff. So we did it over the phone. And they had officials on their end, and we had officials on our end. And rumor has it, Half Moon Bay won by one pound. One pound, right? And we've been doing a pumpkin wayoff ever since, and it's one of the great traditions of the Coastside here. So thank you for starting that, Al. Also, I've got a little something for them here. It says, "The 23 Club, born in 1923," and of course, it's now 2023. 100 years old. Al, you're a good friend. I love you. And this hat is for you. And I will also say, he was our grand marshal at the Fourth of July Parade. And what was it like having 5,000, 6,000 people sing happy birthday to you, Al? It was a special day. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Cameron. Anybody else like to say something? Okay, Vice Mayor Joaquin Jimenez would like to say something.
First of all, happy birthday. Feliz cumpleaños. You probably not remember, but actually, my father and my grandfather came to work for you back in the 70s. So it's thanks to you, you know, that I landed in Half Moon Bay. So I know it's a, I called my parents to let them know that it was your birthday. And my father says, happy birthday.
How about you, John? You got to say something, Mayor Mueller.
It's been an honor when I got home from overseas. Thank God I married the farmer's daughter. But many nights, we would be in the barn packing flowers, ready to go to the farmer's market. He had a council meeting. Oh, my God. Well, guess who was there? The little son-in-law, finish up. And then he would get back from the council meetings, couldn't get in the house because his suit smelled of cigar smoke. Is that correct, Al? Mom would let him back in. But what a great life we've had with Al because he taught us when we were very young, right, Ida? Married couple. It's better to be a giver than a taker. And also, our line is, which we're involved, like all of us in this room, if you're not giving, you're not living. And what a treat for a little sacrificial guy to have this. I tell everybody, I've been to the White House and I've been to the outhouse. Thank God. Because of him.
That was lovely. Happy birthday, Al. Okay, we move on to Mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. And we have Mid Coast. I beg your pardon. I'm glad there's somebody to keep me in line here.
Hi, Deborah.
Hi there. Who is it? Greg?
Mr. Greg Yeges, Chair of the Mid Coast Community Council. That is one tough act to follow. But I'll do my best. Just briefly, you're aware, we're trying to pursue improvements in our telecommunications and form a community fiber network. I've asked county council for advice on creating a legal entity. And I've asked Ray Mueller for funding for feasibility study. Ray wants the request to also come from Half Moon Bay. So I've been in touch with Matt. We need a letter endorsing our findings and asking for the funding for the feasibility study. Pescadero may join us in that. There is a gold rush in grant applications going on right now. Dozens of areas in California are asking for the money for the middle mile broadband initiative. The grant applications are due September, and we're hoping to get some staff help through Matt. We, of course, have prepared a report that's 40 pages and going to 50, so hopefully, it won't be too hard to write the grant request. We certainly have the justification document. We're also going to be working on a report on stormwater. There's a clear vulnerability at the SAM plant, including the creek. We did write a letter to the county requesting funding to test the wastewater for ethanol as we test for COVID and other diseases. Haven't heard a reply. We also wrote a letter to the county requesting funding for 50% of the CARES program to split the costs with Half Moon Bay, because we understand you're in significant financial distress right now. And so whatever we can do to help, you know, we're glad to do it. I did want to mention that the county did some work on the emergency access road up Montero Mountain. And a lot of people are very upset with what they did. Apparently, the damage is extensive. I can't comment further. Research is ongoing. But we are going to look into exactly why it was done, what was done, and whether it's just going to cause more erosion and whether it really solves the problem. You know, Surfers Beach is eroding. I welcome any input on that. We can't find anybody in charge. And it's a multidisciplinary thing with Caltrans, GCSD, DPW. There are a lot of people involved, and I think Half Moon Bay has a role also. But you've seen the problem. And finally, we had a speech by Dr. Travis Longcor on dark skies. I encourage you to find the recording on the NCC meeting. It's very fascinating and disturbing, the problems we're causing with light. And on a side note, it was also fascinating to hear about the benefits of melatonin, not only in fostering sleep, but in dramatic reductions in cancer, including breast cancer from use of melatonin. Thanks for your time. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Greg. Report out from recent closed session meetings, and I don't believe we've had any, so there shouldn't be a report. City manager will give us updates.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two updates tonight. Will be brief. The first will be Colleen Latier, our Communications Program Manager, to talk about recent upgrades to our website.
Good evening, Honorable City Council and members of the community. Just give me one second here. So as Matthew said, I'm here to discuss the new rollout of our website redesign. As you, if you visited our website in the past week, it's got a new, fresh look. So this has been a year-long process that we started last year and has been a full-staff effort to achieve. The main goals for this project were to make it more user-friendly for the public. We want, we designed this interface with the public in mind. You know, it's really easy for us staff to think what's easiest for us, but we really wanted to have the public's perspective. And also, that includes optimizing for ADA compliance. And we wanted to address mobile accessibility, since 85% of people access the Internet via their phones. On top of the new refreshed look, I worked with staff ahead of time, each department, to update the content on their webpages. So that way, we had a cleaner, fresher presentation when we rolled it out entirely. So we worked with Content Consultants for Civic Plus, who host our website. And this, the refresh included consolidating pages, updating or removing outdated pages, and reorganizing content to make it easier to access for the public. As you can see, we revamped the look and feel of the homepage and subsequent internal pages. I would say the biggest difference is our homepage. And that includes our new, what is called a global navigation menu. We used to have it on the side, and it just listed our departments. But, you know, ask anyone who's not involved in the community what a community development department is. No offense, Jill. And so we wanted to make it as user-friendly as possible. So we have government, which includes our department, city services for residents, Explore Half Moon Bay, How Do I, and then the search function. And we've taken specific parts of our website and added them to those. You know, people think about things, search things in different ways, so we wanted to provide them multiple touchpoints and access points to get to the information they need. And then all of these buttons were chosen based on the analytics. So we studied how many users were looking at each of these pages. And shocker, pickleball's really high up there. And, you know, we have a new and refreshed news and updates section, these additional buttons as well, and then a newer calendar look, and directing people to our social media. And then if you look at an internal page, those have a new and refreshed look as well. So, like I said, now that the design is in place, we are still fine-tuning the information. You know, things are coming up that we may not have noticed before. So I welcome any feedback that you guys have or that you see. Members of the community, feel free. You can email me and let me know. But I think it looks great, and I'm very proud of the work that we did as a staff. And so I hope that you all enjoy it.
Thank you, Colleen. It's a lot of work.
Okay, our next update. Colleen, would you mind pulling up? Oh, thank you. Just want to remind the community, August 1st is our annual National Night Out Block Party event. This is a nationwide event. This isn't just something that happens in Half Moon Bay. It happens across the country. It's held on the first Tuesday of August each year. And the purpose of it is really to connect residents of communities with law enforcement and other first responders in a positive way. And it's always been very well-received here in Half Moon Bay. And I think as a city, we've done a great job of promoting it and really encouraging people to participate. We actually provide a little bit of funding to neighborhoods to organize these parties. To date, we have, I believe, 24 parties planned. And we still have another week, so we'll probably, we cap out at about 30, so we'll probably hit there. I want to just point out the neighborhoods that already have parties planned. There are several in Miramar, a few in Sea Haven, a few in Casa Del Mar, one in Highland Park, a couple in the Oak Avenue Park neighborhood, a couple in Allstate's Lorraine, several in Arlita Park, and then Kenyatta Cove always knocks it out of the park with a whole bunch of parties. On top of the first responders, we always take advantage of this opportunity to go out and meet residents with the city council and city staff. The CARES team likes to go out and visit residents on this evening. It's just a great night to get together, to share some food, and get to know each other. If people are interested in where the party in their neighborhood is at, or time is, the clock is ticking, but there is still an opportunity to host a party, you can contact Carlo Way. He's an analyst in the City Manager's office. His email address is above, or you can call him at 726-8254. And again, August 1st, most of the parties start about 5:00, 6:00 p.m. And we're really looking forward to seeing the community there. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. It is always fun. I love it. All right, now we're moving on to public forum. And this is for folks that want to speak to something that is either on the consent agenda or not on the regular agenda. So first, we have Matt Grabowski.
Hello, my name is Matt Grabowski. Tell you a little bit about myself. I love Half Moon Bay, this town. I love the blue collar ethic, the farm workers, everything about it. For the last 17 years, I've been an operator and a worker on professional firework shows in the Bay Area. The largest shows you've ever seen, pretty much. For the last 15, I've worked out of, there's a little place in Half Moon Bay where we have an equipment yard, and I worked out of there on a daily basis. We have people from the coast that work in the yard with us. All my shows, I brought in residents and locals to work the shows. And what I'm here to do is try to generate discussion, hopefully support, maybe find a champion to bring a professional firework show back to the coast. I hear stories constantly from people when they find out what I do of growing up here and going to the shows. A couple weeks ago, I sat with my wife talking to an individual here, and he was telling me how he was a kid, he had, his family had walked down the coast to see the show. And he said, I should come here, you know, and bring it forward. I understand that's, it would probably be in a jurisdiction not quite in the Half Moon Bay. However, another business owner talked to me, and he said, I'm so sick of that parade. We have that wonderful parade, and I feel great. But then they leave town and go to Foster City or Redwood City and watch the shows there. Along with that, they take their money, right? I believe this is a doable event. I brought my boss, my producer, with me, and we hope to speak to some of you after the meeting. I want the discussion to go public. We're open to any comments. We've been doing this an awful long time. And we know how to put on a show professionally and safely. The desire is to, part of the desire is to dissuade people from bringing their own fireworks in the community. You know, if you give them something worthy of going to, that would happen. Was that time? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have... Next, we have Mr. Fenningland. Is that correct?
All right. Good night, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I'm Mr. Pennington. Tell my, give you a little synopsis of who I am. I've been a resident of Half Moon Bay for the last four years, from Santa Barbara. I'm a business owner, SOS Advocacy Group. I'm an investigator for the disabled. I've been in Half Moon Bay, like I said, for four years. And I had a couple of issues in Half Moon Bay, and it was regarding the emergency 24-hour phone at the police station that doesn't work, has not worked in the last four years. But I've been checking it on a regular basis. And I tried to go to the city and get an appointment with you, the mayor, a couple times. And I tried to get an appointment with the... And I tried to get an appointment with the chief of police a couple of times, to no avail. So today, I just want to bring it to the attention of the city. That is very, very important, that that phone actually works. And not just a sign that says "out of order" and with the phone number to call somewhere. It's really important that that phone actually works 24 hours a day with somebody on the other end of the line. And that's all I wanted to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can talk to our sheriff about that and see what exactly is going on and why it is not working. Appreciate it. Next, we have Tyler Halls.
Hi, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tyler Halls. I'm here speaking on behalf of Civic Bell. It's a locally-owned, government-focused social platform, strengthening the bond between local residents and their communities. You may have heard about us. We've been involved in the coast side for the last couple of months now. And we've spoken to some of the people in the council here as well. So what we do is we use a resident verification process to connect local residents to their government officials through a verified, nonpartisan way to help foster a stronger sense of community engagement and help strengthen democracy itself. We've recently been working on some new features, including a translation feature that allows people to seamlessly join the public discourse in their native languages and use that to better lower these barriers to entry, right? Strengthening the public engagement into local government. That's kind of what we're here to do. And one other important thing is that we are free for the coast side and will be. So we've identified the coast side as a regional hotspot of community engagement, especially with local government, but also as a place facing a wide range of dynamic issues, right? We know what these issues are. And the council's demonstrated that important topics like affordable housing, climate resiliency, and sewer water infrastructure are best managed when the local government works with the community to find solutions, creates more robust solutions. And so now that Civic Bell has an established presence on the coast side with several government officials using the platform, including Assembly Member Berman, Sophia Lane of Cabrillo Unified, Council Member Gus of the Midcoast Community Council, and Sid of Montero Water. And with several thousand people viewing the site, just from the pilot alone, we believe that in turn, it's time to invite members of Half Moon Bay, as well as the council, local residents, other government officials, to join Civic Bell and help further bolster the strength of democracy from the ground up. And so that's all I have for today. If anyone has questions about what we do, I'm happy to answer those. I'll be here during and after the meeting. And then we also have our website where officials can sign up, members of the local Half Moon Bay community can sign up. And thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristlyn Geith.
Kristlyn from the Coast Side Chamber. First of all, Civic Bell, super cool, love it, thank you. And thank you for reminding me about 4th of July. I wanted to say thank you so much. The city helped sponsor the block party and it was awesome! And it was the best one yet. And it was one of the, I think, the first time that on the Kelly Avenue, there was lots of games and things for kids. Thank you, Jill. And we just got such positive feedback and we could not have done it without your guys' help and support. So thank you so very much. Also, a big fan of drone shows. Those are really cool. And I also wanted to note that this Saturday is Farms, Fish, and Flowers Tours. It's the 32nd year. It's been going on that long. And we've even got some new farms this year that have not participated in the past. Nine farms and the harbor total. And so tickets are on sale this week. It's a fundraiser for the Chamber as well. And we just appreciate anybody who wants to come. If you want a lunchbox, order by tomorrow so I can get them to you. And then I also wanted to note that the Chamber has been working on its programming. And tomorrow, we're doing a Canva class. So if anybody in the city or in the audience would like to learn how to master Canva for their business, please come on down tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. to the Chamber classroom. And I think that was all of the things. Thank you.
Kristlyn, can you tell us where we can get tickets to Farm Flowers and Fish? Fish and Flowers, right? Fish Farm and Flowers.
Yes, thank you very much. Our also fairly new website, CoastSide365.com, the numbers. There's a banner right on the homepage that links to all of the information as well as the other things that we have going on. And thank you for that reminder. CoastSide365 is a free resource for the businesses and the community. If you have a business on the coast side, please add it to the directory for free because we want to promote you and get people in your door. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carolina Carvajal.
Muy buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Gracias por su tiempo y por siempre darnos esta oportunidad.
And thank you always for your time and to give us this opportunity.
Como ustedes saben, desde hace mucho tiempo hemos traído a su mesa.
So as you already know, we've always brought before you...
Que mientras se construyen nuestros viviendas, que tanto estamos anhelando.
That while the housing that's being constructed, that we're always fighting for.
Es tiempo que haga un control sobre la renta.
It's time to have some rent control.
Eso está en sus manos.
So we know that's in your hands.
Lastimosamente, es algo que ya se está viviendo por la población y aunque ustedes en este momento lo ignoren, es una realidad.
So unfortunately, it's something that the public is dealing with right now. And even though you choose to ignore it, it's something that's happening now.
Hace tres días, a mi casa, perdón, a mi apartamento que rentó llegó una carta.
So three days ago, over in my house, sorry, the apartment where I live, I got a letter.
Diciéndome que van a aumentar 300 dólares de mi renta, de nuestra renta.
Indicating that they're going to increase $300 of my rent.
Si ustedes supieran en las condiciones que nosotros vivimos, somos siete personas viviendo en dos habitaciones.
If you guys knew the conditions that we lived in, it's seven people living in two rooms.
Donde solo está el baño, un baño y una cocina.
But there's only a kitchen and one bathroom.
Donde pagamos 3,800.
Where we pay 3,800.
Y no les quiero decir que es un apartamento nuevo, no lo es.
And I don't want to let you guys know that it's like a new apartment, because it isn't.
Ahora pagaremos 300 dólares más.
And so now we're paying $300 more.
Es una realidad que no nos podemos dar el gusto de contrademandar a esas personas porque tampoco hay ley que nos ampare a nosotros los inquilinos.
It isn't a luxury that we have to kind of go and sue these people because, again, we don't have that luxury to do so.
Si nosotros queremos vivir en Half Moon Bay, ¿qué tenemos que hacer? Pagar esos 300 dólares más.
So if we want to live in Half Moon Bay, what is it that we need to do? We have to pay those $300 more.
Y si me dicen, ¿por qué Carolina? ¿Por qué no buscan otro lugar donde rendar donde sea más barato?
And so if you guys say, "Carolina, why don't you look for a place that's less expensive?"
Porque no hay donde arrendar en Half Moon Bay que sea barato.
Because there's no other place in Half Moon Bay that might be cheaper.
¿Qué requisitos me piden a mí para arrendar un apartamento?
Also, what kind of criteria or requisites are needed from me to rent?
No solo tener un buen récord crediticio.
It's not just having a good credit score.
Dar un depósito de 3,000 dólares.
It's giving a $3,000 deposit.
Pagar el primer mes de renta valorado a la renta. Si estamos diciendo que es 3,800, 3,800.
So pay that first month's rent. So it's prorated, so it would be 3,800 dollars.
Pagar el último mes de salida.
Last month's rent.
Hagamos números. Te necesito un promedio de 12,000 dólares para arrendar un apartamento.
So let's add the numbers up. I would need an income of $12,000 to rent.
Si una persona como yo, que gana 16,40 a la hora...
And now, you're talking about a person who earns 16 and some change per hour.
Que aparte de eso tengo una hija que mantener sola.
Aside from that, there is a little girl, my daughter, that I have to raise on my own.
¿Creen que yo puedo tener 12,000 dólares disponibles en este momento para ir a buscar un apartamento?
Do you think I have $12,000 available so that I can go out and rent that place?
No lo hay.
It isn't.
Y no es que quiero que sientan lástima.
Now, I don't want you to feel sorry for me.
Así vivimos los latinos.
This is how Latinos live.
Mi vida es un ejemplo.
My life is an example of that.
Yo puedo decir que tengo, por este momento, un lugar donde vivir.
So at least I can say that I have a place to live right now.
Que debo de ver cómo lo voy a pagar, lo voy a hacer.
And so I don't know how I'm going to pay my rent, but I'm going to do it.
Pero hay personas en este momento que no tienen un hijo.
But in this moment, there's some people that just don't have one kid.
Tienen tres niños.
They have three.
No tienen donde vivir.
They don't have a place to live.
Viven en su auto.
They live in their car.
Viven en las calles.
On the street.
O viven acobijados por algún amigo.
Or they're just kind of couch surfing with some friends.
Porque no hay una renta accesible en este momento en Half Moon Bay.
Because there's nowhere cheap to rent in Half Moon Bay.
Y no es una mentira.
And this is no lie.
Si ustedes buscan renta en Half Moon Bay en este momento en el internet...
If you guys look right now online for rent in Half Moon Bay...
Hay casas que se rentan por 9,800.
There are houses that go for 9,800 dollars.
Casas por 7,800.
7,800.
Que tienen solo dos habitaciones, un baño.
That only have like a two-bedroom, one-bathroom.
¿Dónde está la lógica en comparación a lo que ganamos?
Where's the logic compared to like what we make?
Estoy hablando de una realidad que está viviendo su pueblo en este momento.
I'm talking about something that the populace is living in right now.
Si no hacen algo para solucionar esto, su población se va a ir de este pueblo.
If nothing is done for your people, the people will leave.
Y no es una amenaza.
It isn't a threat.
Es una realidad.
It's a reality.
Si las personas no tienen donde vivir cómodamente, emigran.
If people don't have a place to live comfortably, they're gone.
Si aunque hubiera trabajo aquí, si no hay donde vivir, la gente tendrá que marchar.
Even if there's work, if people don't have a place to stay.
Simplemente es un recordatorio, por favor, que pongan atención a esto.
So please, I want to draw your attention. This is just a friendly reminder.
En este momento, los inquilinos no tenemos leyes que nos protejan contra eso.
And right now, renters don't have any laws to protect us.
Así que es tiempo de ustedes hacer cosas que nos protejan a nosotros.
So it's time for you all to do stuff for us, to protect us.
Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Carolina. Next, we have Vaughn Harrison.
I'm Vaughn Harrison. I'm a member of Coast Side Jewish Community and the Coast Side Faith in Action. And I also wanted to speak in favor of rent control or something. I know rent control might not be politically possible as it wasn't when I was living in Pacifica. 30 years ago, I had a pink-collar job and I was raising two kids. And my rent kept going up and up and up. And it was really stressful sometimes. You know, I couldn't provide for my kids, other things they needed. Today, I'm more fortunate because my family had generational wealth. My grandfather came here to this country and he was a peddler with a pack on his back, along with his brother, two teenagers. But today, our family is better off. And I know that Latinos, Anglos, and other people are really struggling in this community to be able to live and work and play in Half Moon Bay, according to our motto. And I hope something can be done about the way housing costs go up and up and up because the market will bear it.
Thank you, Vaughn. Next, we have Steve Deers, or Dyers?
Deers. Good evening, folks. My name is Steve Deers. I'm a retired Ranger, naturalist, 39 years. I'd like to speak to the effect about the fireworks. And I think the city and the police did a wonderful job this year by really keeping a lid on it. My concern is the number of illegal fireworks that are brought to the coast every year. And as an example, if you saw the report from the Pacific Beach Coalition, where the city of Pacifica allowed fireworks in a certain area, the amount of debris, trash left behind, was such that you could hardly walk through the area where it would have happened. The same thing happened at Lake Tahoe. And the, I'm going to have to put my spectacles on, excuse me. There, in 2022, there was $2.3 billion spent on consumer fireworks and less than half a billion dollars spent on fireworks displayed, like Matt was talking about. In 2020, there were 17,000 injuries, firework-related injuries, and 26 deaths. In 2020, there was 10,200 injuries and 11 deaths. Where on the body do these injuries occur? The head and the face, 19%. On the eyes, 16%. Torso and other part of the body, 12%. Hands and fingers, 29%. And legs and arms, 24%. This study was done between June 17th and July 17th in 2022. That was 73% of when these injuries occurred for the year. And the ages of the individuals that were injured was between 25 and 40. So men that are going through midlife crisis are still responsible for this. All right. So my concern, because I've only been in Half Moon Bay for six years and I love it here, the people are wonderful. And the only problem I have is it takes me five minutes to walk down to the beach. The challenge with the illegal fireworks, I don't know where they're coming from, but if they're spending $2.3 billion on fireworks, a good percentage of them have to be these illegal ones, like the mortars that they were setting off in Pacifica on July 4th.
Thank you, Steve. We need you to wrap it up. Can you say it quickly?
Well, I'm hoping that what we can do is continue the surveillance on 4th of July here and we can find some way of dealing with the illegal fireworks that are sold to individuals in California.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Mel.
Hello, honorable council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Julie Mel. I own Beach Break Entertainment and Beach Break Entertainment Film Festival. We started in August 2020 to bring the community out during the height of COVID, when nobody was leaving their homes or their couches. And we have been going strong ever since. In fact, we're showing Dirty Dancing this Saturday, Friday night, at San Benito House in the Garden. I encourage you all to attend and see how the movies bring people together outside under the stars. That's why I'm here tonight. I am inviting you to consider partnering with Beach Break through the month of September to bring movies free to the community like so many other communities in the Bay Area do. We have, thanks to the Kristlyn and the Chamber, in this... in December, we showed Elf during the Last of the Nights of Lights. On the wall opposite Jeff Clark's, or the Jeff Clark mural. And we are proposing to do that again on three different evenings. We've sent out a letter and asking Matthew to look at our proposal and consider doing this for the community. It's a great way to bring people out, keep people out. We can make it a babysitting or not, where parents can drop their kids in the parking lot with their chairs and blankets, and they can go out to dinner, which encourages people to go out to the restaurants. Or everyone can come out, eat dinner, and come to the parking lot. We like that space because it's enclosed from some of the elements. If it's windy, we project right onto the big wall, and people seem to really enjoy it. So I hope you'll talk about it, consider it, and get back to me on another date. In the meantime, also, we just threw a mid-year film festival. It was a social impact focused on education. And we filled the Coastal Rep Theater to capacity, which was shocking even to me because it was a Saturday night in July. So thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Julie. Our last speaker is Pat Diaz.
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. My name is Pat Diaz. You got it real close. I am the show producer for Pyro Spectaculars here in San Francisco Bay Area. Matt has been one of our very trusty operators for many years. And as he mentioned, we have a facility out here, out on Diggs Canyon, that has been here for 15 years. We feel like we're residents of the community, and we're very proud to be doing business here in Half Moon Bay. So I'm here for a couple of reasons. One is to back up Matt and say if fireworks are desired here in Half Moon Bay, which it seems like they are, then I'm the guy that can make it happen. Secondly, I'm here to address some of the concerns that our distinguished friend here raised a few moments ago. Illegal fireworks are a major concern. I've been in the fireworks industry for 40 years, and I have seen over and over again where towns that have had, and cities that have had public displays, where people can come and see fireworks and fulfill that desire to celebrate our nation's independence with fireworks in a safe environment that is controlled versus places where public displays go away. And invariably, where public displays go away, the desire does not go away. And so in comes a big flood, bigger flood, of illegal fireworks. Those would be ranging from professional products, like what we use in our displays, to consumer items that are imported from out of state, to the straight-up illegally manufactured, what we call M-devices, that are the huge firecrackers. And people get injured, maimed, and killed. By providing fireworks in a safe, controlled, public manner, this, and we've seen it over and over again, this tends to quell that desire and allow people to see fireworks without having to put themselves at risk. With regard to the environmental concerns, Pyro Spectaculars has been a leader in being able to perform fireworks in an environmentally responsible manner. In fact, I've been one of the people who has worked with the San Francisco Bay Area Water Board. And I'm responsible for filling out all of the environmental reports and keeping track of debris and making sure that we pick up after ourselves and those kind of things. So fireworks is something that is doable here in Half Moon Bay. I'll cut it short. It's doable. We can do it responsibly, and we can increase the public safety by doing so. Thank you very much for taking a few moments of your time for me.
Thank you, Pat. We now go online.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first Zoom speaker is Linda Goldstein. Linda, go ahead.
Hi, I am Linda Goldstein, and I am with, first, I want to thank all of you for your support for low-income and very low-income housing, for what you've done in the past and what you're going to be doing moving forward. I recently learned that farmworkers make up to 30,000 a year. Up to, that means that there are several that make less than that. And I'm wondering how they can survive on the coast side, making so little money. And so it's, I know you all know all of this. This is not new. But I think it's important to speak up for the farmworkers and the essential workers. I don't know what we would do without them. I'm very white-privileged. They clean my homes. They do gardening. They do repairs. They work in the restaurants. They work in the hotels. And they're good people, and they deserve the right to have housing. And I could probably go on and on, but that's basically what I wanted to say. So I thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you, Linda.
Our next speaker is Joanne Rokoski.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Rokoski. I'm a member of Coastside Faith in Action and the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community. First, thank you for your work underway at Stone Pine and at 555 Kelly. While this work towards new housing progresses, low and very low-income workers in the community continue to struggle to afford rent and hear unjust eviction and rent increases. Carolina just coignantly spoke about the impact of the rent increases just this evening. And as Linda just mentioned, an average farmworker makes only up to 30,000 a year, yet must spend at least 1,500 a month, or 18,000 a year, to rent a single room with a shared bathroom and kitchen. The legislative report that you'll discuss later in this meeting does indicate Half Moon Bay's support of two housing-related bills currently in the State Assembly. Sb4, which streamlines approval processes for building on church lands, and Sb567, the Homelessness Prevention Act, which corrects loopholes in and strengthens enforcement of Sb1482. Whether these proposals will actually become law remains to be seen. But meanwhile, the county has deferred consideration of a tenant protection ordinance for unincorporated areas. So at this point, as Carolina described, low-income and very low-income renters in Half Moon Bay continue to struggle on a daily basis. Please enact measures now to prevent undue rent increases, unfair eviction, and harassment. I'm emphasizing the word undue and unfair. Reasonable increases, of course, are anticipated. Eviction for cause can occur, but sometimes these actions are not fair, and harassment is never fair. All of these measures that I'm begging you for are just interim steps to prevent displacement and increase the risk of homelessness while you continue to work to increase the stock of affordable housing. And I urge you to do so now, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joanne.
Our next speaker is Nancy Margulies.
Hi, I'm Nancy Margulies. I live in Montero, where I've been for the last 25 years. And I used to, I was a psychologist for a number of years, and then I worked with large corporations to try to help them take a much larger look at the system they were working in and the impact they had. When I think about our situation here on the coast, it could be looked at as a large system. It could be looked at as similar to the entire country, where people are dividing and fighting when we desperately need to get along and be really creative and really proactive at this time in the history of the planet. So I really am so much in favor of this ordinance. And I know there's people who are saying, well, you know, what about the landlords? And these differences do not have to divide us. They can be the reason that we have some really good generative conversation. And if a landlord who is treating their tenant fair is not in jeopardy, if there's an ordinance that says you can't evict for no cause and so on. So I just wish we could come together and have some conversations to resolve differences so they don't stand in the way of things moving forward. It just feels so important and absolutely the right thing to do in terms of being much more supportive of all of the essential workers who work in our community and who will move away if something doesn't change. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Our next speaker is Gloria Stofan.
Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name's Gloria Stofan. I live in Pacifica and am a homeowner and a member of Coastside Faith in Action and Pacifica Housing for All. I urge you, as you've heard others before me, to support low and very low-income housing here on the coast. Both my parents came as immigrants from Central America to this country to make a better life for themselves. Thank God, at that time, the early '40s, they were able to cross the border with no problem and find jobs and housing. I consider housing as a sacred human right for us all, that we have a right to live in a safe environment with dignity and respect. Several of my neighbors, including my son, have been displaced because of the high cost of rent. And some now are having to make long commutes to their jobs. My plea to you as council members is to listen. Listen to those who are most vulnerable. Listen to those who have with other, who live with other families in a small apartment of two bedrooms, one bath. Listen to those who have children, who have become anxious and insecure and unable to concentrate on schoolwork. Remember that a stable home makes for a healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria.
Our last speaker is Belinda Ariaga.
Good evening, city council. Thank you, Mayor, and everyone today. Glad to be here by Zoom. I'm coming in a little bit early than what I planned because I'm in Mexico, so I'm not going to have good reception. So I wanted to share some thoughts with you all now, just to say, first of all, thank you for all the support that you've given us the last couple of years for mental health. For ALS, we've been a lifeline to the community because of your care, your support, and your investment in mental health. We've been able to work with the most vulnerable population at a time when counseling services are really hard to find. I had a community member write me tonight and said, I'm desperate for help. She's been trying for a month to get higher-needs services throughout the county. I've been working with her diligently. But, you know, even to get psychiatric services, higher care is really hard. And we've been able to work with the community to provide wraparound services, wraparound care, all the way from our community that has suffered so much through this year's tragedies of the flood, of the tragedy, you know, that has happened, that we're still really struggling with, so many. We've been able to offer free services. We also are a model for Samhain County. We've been asked to lead a big survey that really addresses the need for more services for mental health and for AOD across the county. ALS has been at the forefront of that because of our model that we've had. And thanks to you, we've been able to offer like free counseling services for a halftime code for clinician. That means there's no barriers to come into services. And as a result, we see a waiting list for mental health. And I think for so long, people said that Latinos had a stigma against mental health, but we're flipping that in Half Moon Bay and seeing the complete opposite. And it's because of the barriers that have been removed from making this so complicated. We don't do sliding scale. There's no charge at all. You know, it's not complicated. We don't do Medi-Cal. Literally, it's free because of the way that you all have invested. So I want to first say thank you and hope that you'll consider us again for the funding that's coming up, because we do have a waiting list. We have seniors that are needing help. We have our continued farmworkers and children. And also, we've had a lot of death over the last couple of years, including from COVID. And I think many people don't see what brief counseling looks like, you know? And we don't often talk about all of this at ALS because of confidentiality and because it's so important to really just honor the work we're doing behind the scenes. But today, I just wanted to come and let you know that there's so many vulnerable populations that we're serving because of you. So thank you, city council.
Thank you, Belinda. And that ends public forum. We move on to...
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. I know we don't normally respond to public comment, but there was such a theme carried through there. I was wondering if I could just give a quick update?
Please.
Thank you. I know a lot of folks have spoken tonight about the challenges that continue in our community around rental. And it's really sad to hear the continuing increasing prices and the increasing pressure that's being placed on our renters. So I just want to make sure the community knows that in our priority setting, this fiscal year, which just started July 1st, our city council actually directed staff to explore rent control or rent stabilization measures. Our city attorney's office and our housing staff are working on that now. We've been following the county's process really closely because obviously, in a community like ours, it makes a lot of sense to have similar laws and similar regulations throughout the coast side, so it's not confusing depending on where you live. Unfortunately, last week, at the county's hearing on their rent control studies, they've decided to push it out even farther. And so I think we're not going to be able to wait and see what they do. We need to continue to press forward on ours. So staff will be bringing something to you in the next couple of months to consider. And hopefully, it can reap some fruit that can help our renters here in Half Moon Bay.
Thank you, Matthew. We move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone on council wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? May I have a motion, then?
Sure. I would like to move that we adopt the consent calendar, including Items 1A, Waive Reading of Resolutions and Ordinances; Item 1B, Warrants for the Month of June 2023; Item 1C, Receipt of Legislative Position Letters; Item 1D, Professional Services Agreement with the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce to Provide On-Site Coordination of Programming and Facility Oversight for the Opportunity Center of the Coast Side; Item 1E, John L. Carter Park Improvements Project; Amendment Number 6 to Professional Services Agreement with ELS Architecture and Urban Design, Inc., for Additional Design Services; Item 1F, Final Acceptance of the Kelly Avenue Crosswalks Project. And that's it.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Okay, we move on to ordinances and public hearings. 2A, the ordinance adopting Chapter 13.22 regulating disposal of fats, oil, grease, and sand.
Mayor Penrose, we just need a motion to continue that public hearing to a date certain of September 5th, 2023.
Could I have that motion, please?
Move to continue?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we move on to fiscal year 2023-24 sewer service charges and assessments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Moaz Bolzerguina, Polyworks Director and City Engineer. I'll be presenting with Kenneth Stiles, our finance manager. So tonight, for this public hearing, we're requesting the council to conduct a public hearing, adopt the resolution for the 2324 fiscal year sewer service assessments, and direct staff to file the appropriate items with the county controller and to move forward with direct billing for those certain assessments that are directly billed. A little bit of background, the city owns and operates the sewer collection system with treatment provided by the Sewer Authority Mid-Costside, which is long for SAM, through a joint powers authority agreement with Montero and Granada Services Districts. The city charges the users of the sewer collection system and places those funds in the enterprise fund that is solely for the purpose of maintaining and managing our sewer collection system and the improvements necessary to the treatment plan. The funds can be maintained mostly for those pieces. And what we're doing tonight is moving forward with increases that were adopted back in June 20th, June 2nd of 2020. And these charges would apply to a total of 3,464 customers on the collection system. What we're going to have tonight is an approximately, you'll see it, it's an approximate 13% increase in rates. And what does that mean for a residential? This previous year, it was per unit, per year, it was $1,056. And this upcoming year, it's going to increase to $1,188. That's for single-family users. These increases were adopted as part of that larger rate study, and we have one more year left beyond this increase.
So some of the logistics, if this were to be approved tonight. So from here, if council were to approve it, we would send the assessments to the property tax, San Mateo County. They, most of our customers are billed through the property tax rolls. Outside of a handful, we will direct bill about 172 customers that we won't be billing through the tax rolls. Now, we have to get this to the county by July 31st in order for them to assess the parcels. That would be for this coming tax bills. It's about 30,200 of this assessed to the rolls, about 172 directly. As required, the city is, has to require to have a public hearing and publish notices. Those notices were published, and tonight is the required public hearing. Overall, the total sewer assessment charges for next year is 6.3 million estimated revenues. The assessments reflect the adopted Service Sewer Charges Rate Study that was performed in 2020 that that council approved of. As Moaz mentioned, that we have about a year left on that rate study. The rates are increasing approximately by about 13% for all customers for next fiscal year. And with that, we'll take any questions. And then the recommendations is falling on the screen. And from there, we'll take on the public hearing.
Thank you, council. Discussion? Questions? Comments? I was going to say, is there any public comment? Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Mayor Penrose, if you could just officially open the public hearing and then close it.
I'm officially opening the public hearing. Now I'm officially closing the public hearing. Thank you.
I move that, having conducted a public hearing, that we adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023-24 sewer service assessments and charges, and direct staff to file the assessment roll, and authorize the county controller to place the assessment charges on the County of San Mateo property tax roll, and direct staff to bill assessments directly that are not on the tax roll.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Hearing, no opposition. The motion passes. We're moving on to resolutions and staff reports. The first is the fiscal year 2023-24 Community Services Financial Assistance Program.
Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse from this item.
Thank you. We'll let you know when it's over. Thanks.
I am an employee of one of the nonprofit organizations that might be receiving a grant, so I have to recuse myself from this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and members of the community. I'm Julissa Acosta, the Community Services Analyst with the City Manager's Office. And I'm here to talk to you about the Community Services Financial Assistance Program for the fiscal year of 2023-24, and the recommendations that the subcommittee presented to us. A little bit of background, this program started back in 2018, fiscal year 2018-2019, funding approximately 15 organizations with smaller pots of money to support the services they provided on the coast. Throughout the years, the focus of the program and the funding changed slightly, especially when the pandemic hit. The focus was to support the organizations that were providing essential services to the community that was affected because of COVID-19. Last year, the focus again changed, and it was mostly informed by prior recommendations to provide a more integrative approach among nonprofit service providers and create more connection between them. And the focus was to provide safety net services. That in terms of this grant program relates to basic needs, housing, clothing, food, rental assistance, mental health care, and dental health as well. For the fiscal year 2020-24, we met several times with the subcommittee members, presented the application process. We came back to council a couple of months ago to present an update on the last year recipients and to present the 2324 requirements for this grant. As you see on your screen, applicants where, sorry, applicants must provide essential safety net services. Top consideration was given to those who demonstrate how program services are coordinated, integrated, and leveraged, among other relevant nonprofit safety net services. We also saw with the storms and the shooting that culturally competent services were of extreme need, especially in the language spoken by the community members who were receiving those services. And we also asked this year, because of the implementation of the cohort, that if the organizations participated in the cohort, to share their experiences. After the subcommittee met, we, staff recommended that we continue with $300,000 in funding, continue to fund essential safety net services, and again, are informed by prior recommendations. And I already mentioned the basic safety net services. And we also would like to continue with the cohort approach that was, to build on the success that we created. And quickly just on that note, I want to share, this year, the focus of the cohort was on organizational visibility and collective effort. We brought in technical assistants, and we met several times with the subcommittee and developed a shared message for all of the organizations that were participating in the cohort. And I quickly want to just read something that we collectively created. And I say we because it was all the organizations during one of workshops, input their information into a spreadsheet, and then the technical assistance staff crafted it so it made sense and it was cohesive. We are the Coastside, sorry, we are the Community Services Financial Assistance Collaborate, representing numerous human services organizations, providing care to the people living and working in the city of Half Moon Bay and surrounding communities of the coastal San Mateo County. We believe in the power of collective action to shape and build our community anew. As a collective of organizations working together to support the people of our community, we are able to do more by sharing our resources, time, and energy. This was a beautiful message that really embraced what the collaborative is and what we were able to accomplish over the last year. Organizations shared their interest in continuing participation. We created our repository, so grantees have access to the shared materials and the tools that we provided. And we encourage to think outside the box and to really think on collaboration. And we noticed even in this round of applications that that was instilled in them. Organizations shared their thoughts on joining for grant applications, on implementing similar cohort models that we thought was a fantastic idea. And we just wanted to highlight the success because it was the first year we're doing this, and we really wanted you to be aware of what we're seeing on the front lines with the nonprofit providers. The subcommittee, like I mentioned, met several times. We evaluated all of the applications that we received. And just as a reminder, the focus this year is to continue funding safety net services. Basic needs include food, housing, clothing, job-related support, childcare, after-school care, and help accessing public benefits and mental health support. So this is what the subcommittee recommended. You can see there's a section for mental health services. I understand there were some questions, and I'm happy to take it. Just before we do that, this is the slide that we're presenting, no funding recommended because staff, I'm sorry, the subcommittee members didn't feel that they aligned with the safety net services that we wanted to provide. I'll present the recommendation, but again, I'm happy to take questions. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute agreements with each of the nonprofit organizations and respective grant amounts listed in the attached exhibit A for the Community Services Financial Assistance Program for fiscal year 2023-24.
Thank you, Julissa. Would the council like to hear from the public first or have a discussion? Okay, we'll start with Nigel Taverner.
Good evening. I'm the board chair of Sonrisa Dental Health, and I would just like to say thank you for letting us join the cohort this year that's just finished. My team has told me that it has been a great privilege to be included in the cohort with such legendary nonprofits as Abundant Grace, alas, Coastside Hope, and the rest of them there, Senior Coastsideers, and so on. And we have learned a lot, and we have been actually done a great deal together. And therefore, we would love it if that cohort continues. I'd also like to thank you for the grant we had last year. And if you think about it, Belinda was talking before about how difficult it is for her clients to get health care and find living things. We've talked about it because they, there are a lot of people in Half Moon Bay who don't qualify for dental medical. And so, medical dental, I'm sorry, I'll get that right one day. And therefore, we cater to them as well, and also, of course, those who do manage to get medical dental. And it costs us about 130 bucks for every patient visit. So if you do the math, you can work out how many patients, visits have been for that. So thank you for that. And if I'm not being, as my mother would say, too previous, we'd be really grateful if this resolution is passed and we can continue to do that work and continue to be part of that cohort. Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you, Nigel. Next, we have Cassie Talbot.
Hey, everybody. So I'm Cassie Talbot, and I am the president-elect of Coast Pride. You've also probably seen me because I'm also on PMAC, and I'm a Pescadero High School teacher. So I'm here representing Coast Pride, and my speech has changed a little bit because now I'm seeing us on the board. So I want to thank you all so much. Our goal of the 50,000 was to hire a counselor for our mental health services. And the reason being is because we need a queer-affirming counselor. Now, you all may know a lot about the LGBTQIA+ community, but that also transcends all racial and ethnic identities as well, especially our Latinx community. And part of this grant was to reach, hard to reach due to stigma and isolation. And in the LGBTQIA+ community and the Latinx community, there is a fear of losing loved ones or not even coming out of the closet because of rejection and judgment. Is my three minutes already up? Is that a thing? Okay, I'm going to keep going, but beat me again, you know? Fear of violence and bullying. And in comparison to heterosexual youths as a high school teacher, and then also working in Half Moon Bay and Pacifica High Schools, the sexual violence is 22% for LGBTQIA+ versus 8% for heterosexual. And being bullied is 23% for the LGBTQIA+ community versus 12% for heterosexual youth. So when we think about an isolated and stigmatized community, as we know, the LGBTQIA+ community makes people uncomfortable and abrupts against what they were raised to believe. So, but with this and seeing us on the board, I am just immensely grateful that we can continue that work. We already do two bimonthly support groups for middle-aged students, two for high school, monthly family support, and also age and wealth for people that are 50-plus when they find themselves sometimes in senior homes. It almost like those bullying and suicide risks increase all over again because they're in a new space with new people who might not be gender or sexuality-affirming for their identities. But once again, it's a pleasure to be here at my first meeting, and I thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Judith Guerrero.
Good evening, council members and city staff. My name's Judith Guerrero. I'm the executive director of Coastside Hope. And I'm here to also thank you for all the support that you've given us in the past years, but also speak up about the value that the cohort had last year. As Julissa mentioned before, I think even though we are a small community, we learned a lot about each other. There were times where we actually learned about the services that we provided. And we also talked about how we could collaborate together to service a lot of the people that we have in common. So I hope that the resolution will pass and that we can continue to work. And I will say that the cohort was an added value to the previous years. I also want to thank you for considering us for this grant because this is a way that we help the residents of Half Moon Bay. Although my organization serves the entire coast, the money that's allocated out of this program is just for Half Moon Bay residents, and many of them are in the sublease situation where some of the other funds are not able to help them. So thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Next, we have Sandy Winter.
Good evening, council members, city staff, and community members. My name is Sandy Winter, and I am the executive director of Senior Coastsideers. I want to echo the thanks that other speakers have given you for the funding opportunity. Thank you for the resolution for this year. I do hope it passes. Thank you also for the financial support that you've given to senior coastsideers in the past. I actually want to thank you even further back because this cohort initiative came out of the Coastside Recovery Initiative, which I feel is tremendously important for the coast. the coast. And I think that the dedication that the staff and your consultants have shown in making sure that the Coastside Recovery Initiative was not just a report that sits on the shelf, but has actually added, led to really important opportunities for the coast and tremendous amounts of funding. So the fact that this cohort came out of that, I think, is a testament to your forward thinking and how much everybody here cares for the community in a long-term way. So thank you for that. I do want to set a little bit of context to say that in most other cities in San Mateo County, the senior center is part of Parks and Recreation. And so that would be paid for and funded by the city. So the rent, the staff salaries, the transportation, that would all be city-funded. And that doesn't happen in Half Moon Bay because we're a small city with a small tax base. And so we appreciate that the city is not able to financially support the services of older adults in a way that other cities do. But it's important for us, therefore, to continue to receive funding through things such as the Community Services Financial Assistance Grant. And we would plan to use this funding to support our home repair programs, our food programs that make sure that there is, we reduce the food insecurity of older adults in our community, our care management services that connect people to sports and services, our classes and activities that make sure that people feel connected and valued and have an opportunity to interact with others socially. And these are all very, very important things for older adults. I also want to talk briefly about the cohort. I found this tremendously helpful. Even though we know each other and work with each other frequently as executive directors of nonprofits, there were still glimpses into people's personalities that I carry with me, things that people said that I didn't know about them, that I didn't know about their past and their history and the challenges that they've overcome to get them to the place where they were. And I think that's really important when you work with others in what can sometimes be a very stressful environment. So having those personal relationships was wonderful. Having the, do I really have to stop now? Having the Lightbox Collaborative Technical Assistance was absolutely amazing to help us hone our messages about how we're different from each other, but how collectively we have such an important purpose within the community. And the Lightbox Collaborative offered each of the nonprofits an additional one-hour consulting session. And Senior Coastsiders has taken advantage of that because we're coming up to our 50th anniversary and we may be thinking of taking the word seniors out of our name and, you know, do we do a rebranding? And so that capacity building is extended. So you sowed the seed, but then we're taking advantage of those opportunities to continue. So thank you again for your past support. I hope that we benefit from your continued support and thank you for all the work that you do for our community.
Thank you, Sandy. Next, we have Patty Ramirez.
That's a full-service nonprofit right there, isn't it?
Muchas gracias a la mesa del Consilio.
So thank you very much, council.
Agradezco su escucha y su atención para nuestra organización de ALAS.
I appreciate you listening and the time for our organization, ALAS.
Mi nombre es Patty Ramirez y soy supervisora de servicios sociales en la organización de ALAS.
So my name is Patty Ramirez and I'm manager for social services at ALAS.
Gracias por su apoyo y ayuda para nuestra comunidad.
Thank you for the support and the help for our community.
Su inversión en nuestra comunidad para el cuidado de la salud mental es tan importante.
Your investment to services for mental health is so important.
Tenemos tantos niños y familias.
We have so many children and families.
Personas ancianos que necesitan nuestro apoyo.
Older people that need our support.
De salud mental.
Mental health support.
Esto ayuda a nuestros miembros de la comunidad.
So this helps our community members.
Corazones de oro para el cuidado del adulto mayor.
So help the seniors as well.
Hemos ayudado, hemos ayudado a los invisibles, los que murieron, y dando consejería en el duelo especialmente a estas víctimas.
So we've helped all of the people in the shootings and especially the families, victims' families, excuse me, sorry.
Los que están solos y nadie los escucha.
Alone, that may not have anybody to hear them out.
Y ahí hay tantas personas que no ven a las que podemos ayudar.
And so there's so many other people that we don't necessarily see that we can be helping.
Con su apoyo, con el apoyo de ustedes.
So with your support.
Nos ayudan a cuidar a los invisibles.
You would help us take care of those invisible people.
Aquellos que nunca podrían pagar la salud mental.
People that maybe were never able to afford mental health.
Y que nunca vendrían a un centro de asesoramiento.
Those people that would never go out to these types of clinics or centers.
Es un lugar de cultura, amor y esperanza.
It's a place where you can find culture, love, happiness.
Y veríamos aquellos cuyos seres queridos han muerto y no han tenido y no tienen dónde acudir.
So what we're going to do is we're going to let her read it and then I'll just take it over and give a site translation.
Hemos ayudado a familias tras familias desde que COVID inició con asesoramiento de duelo. Hemos estado trabajando con nuestros adultos mayores, los latinos, que se sienten tan solos y acudir a consejería les ha dado una salvavidas, les ha dado una salvación. La comunidad latina está muy interesada por causar una, por causa del alojamiento, como lo decía Carolina. Los costos económicos y más hemos estado ahí para escuchar y ayudar. Nuestra comunidad depende de este subsidio. Gracias.
So because of confidentiality, but your support has really helped us to take care of those people that are so-called invisible, those people that have never been able to pay or afford mental health, and those that would never come into our centers. These, our centers are actually a place of culture, love, and hope. And we can actually see those people whose loved ones have died or they don't have a place to go to. We've helped family after family since COVID with their moments of hurt. And we've also been working with the older people, the older Latino people, that feel alone or can't make it to counseling. And this has been kind of a lifeline for them. The Latino community is very stressed because of the displacement issues and these economic costs and even more things. We've been there to listen and to help. Our community depends on this grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Enrique Bazan.
Hello, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Kike Bazan. I am here representing ALAS. I work for ALAS. And I started working for ALAS in the month of February, so I'm kind of new. And in these six months, I have learned something that has amazed me. I come from a place where the city doesn't help nonprofits, doesn't care necessarily, usually the reason why many people live in the streets, why people don't have jobs. So I just want to thank you for what you do, for all this support, for bringing us together, for the heart that you put into the work, on the hard work. Julissa, Matthew, thank you very much for what you have done and how much it has helped, how much I see it helps the community. I think the most important, I mean, we care a lot about mental health. And the most important thing about mental health is feeling the company, that we are not alone. So for you guys to support this project and for us to be part of that, I really appreciate it. Everything that I have learned in these six months, I feel that the organization, ALAS, is learning, the collaborative is learning, the city is learning, and we are learning to work together. And I really appreciate that and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kike. And now we have some online folks.
Yes, our first speaker is Windsor Kincaid.
Hello, good evening, city council members. My name is Windsor Kincaid and I am an employee with ALAS. I am one of the mental health clinicians that works with ALAS. And I just want to pass along my gratitude for this grant. You know, working firsthand with folks in the ALAS community has proven to be very humbling. And, you know, I know there's so much more that is possible and has been made possible already due to support from the community. Farm workers have been studied in terms of their mental health. And not only farm workers, but folks who have an experience of being undocumented or without health insurance, without access to care in the community. And it's proven to have a grave impact on people's well-being. And the access to mental health care really is fundamental for people in healing and in being able to be a part of the community and feel cared for. So being able to work for an organization like ALAS and to support folks in their journey of healing, despite whatever their background, despite their capacity to provide insurance, despite, you know, whether or not they're documented, is really unique. And so I'm very grateful for your support and continued efforts to promote mental health in the community of folks who are most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you, Windsor.
Our next speaker is Juan Ruiz.
Good evening, council members, staff, community. My name is Juan Carlos Ruiz. I am also part with ALAS. I am the research coordinator and a PhD student in public health at UC Irvine and a Stanford graduate in health policy. The reason today I speak before you is due to the amount of work that we have conducted with the community, including farm workers. Mental health is a continued issue that we need to address specifically that deals with immigration and police trauma, that be from prior or present experiences. The need for mixed-status families is extremely high. Many of these folks do not have access to health insurance currently. And even with the expansion of medic health services to undocumented folks in the state, there will still be more than 70,000 individuals in the state, including some of our community members, who will go uninsured due to financial limitations and other statuses that they may hold. And so in my work as a health policy researcher, as a community-based researcher, the need to fund mental health programming that's not only culturally conscious but socially conscious to the ever-changing political environment is very important. I believe that with your support from the past and continued support, if you may, we're able to continue making the gap in health inequities a lot less in the community, especially for farm workers. I'm here in full support of this because I am an expert in this and I see the importance of the work that's being conducted. And so I really appreciate your time to taking all these comments into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Juan.
Our next speaker is Juana Lopez. Juana, could you unmute?
Sí, aquí estoy. Sí, buenas noches.
Uh, un momento, por favor.
Sí, soy una trabajadora de ALAS.
So I'm an ALAS employee. Good evening.
Soy consejera de las personas de la tercera edad de corazones de oro.
So I'm a counselor for older people, Corazones de Oro.
Y esto quiero pedirles que tomen en cuenta la salud mental.
So I'd like to ask you all to please consider mental health. The help that ALAS gets in order to provide mental health services. So my peers have already mentioned all of this. It's a very good service for children, for youth, adolescents, and for elderly people. So I really ask you to please, please take into consideration mental health. So when I go visit elderly people at home, I wish you can see the happiness that they have. There's some people that tell me, like, I really need you, I really need you. And so I feel so proud to be able to visit them. Because I know they're forgotten by many organizations. So please consider mental health. Something real brief. So I'm not sure what's going on with Highway 92 where the wires are kind of hanging there by the trees. Because it's very dangerous for me. It seems very dangerous for me. And I don't know who, like, makes decisions in regard to this. But I'd like for you to consider it. Because for me, it's very dangerous. Let's not wait for an accident to happen. So if you can, like, walk on 92 or maybe take a drive by 92, you can see how the wires are all tangled up. Maybe a lot of people might laugh at me because of this. Because they might say, why is she worried about the cables and the tangled up in the trees? But for me, it's very dangerous and that's why I'm mentioning it. So let's not wait for another storm or wildfires. Thank you for listening. So I've been with you all in these meetings for a long time. I feel proud living in Half Moon Bay. But we need your help. You all are our voice. God bless you. And remember, we're all one heart, we're all one world. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Juana.
Annie Behrens.
Yes, hello. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to the city council. I'm a developmental behavioral pediatrician at Stanford and a researcher in child mental health and behavioral health. Many people have already spoken very, very well about the great need for mental health services. So I'll just briefly speak about the work that's going on at ALAS with counseling in hopes of continued support for their services. So we have such an incredible So we have such an incredible need for child mental health therapists. We struggle so, so much to get to find therapists for our patients. And the work that ALAS is doing in immigrant child mental health is really becoming a model for the whole region. Researchers at Stanford are coming together to kind of learn from their model. We're partnering with ALAS to develop some innovative child behavioral health services that bring in Stanford providers as well. So it's just to speak to the really transformative work that they're doing and the importance of continuing to support them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Annie. Okay, Jill Jacobson.
Good evening, council and staff. I wonder when we get to the point where we would rather not hear from us, but when Julissa asks, we all will bow down because she has been such a fearless leader for the cohort this year. And I just really want to give a shout out to the staff that brought us together as nonprofits. Somebody said something really wise when we first gathered, and that is that while we all need to collaborate, we really are competitors in many, many ways. We are looking for some of that same attention, dollars, space, social media feed, whatever it be. And the cohort experience this year for the grantees in the Community Service Financial Assistance Program was a transformative experience, I think, for many of us. I know that part of that was powered by the tragedies in January and the fact that we needed to look at our work differently. But the place that Erica and Julissa created for us to do that together was really, really magical. And I think some of my peers spoke to that. But I just want to add my voice to sit in a room with other nonprofit executives who were serving some of the same people and say, "How can we do this better? What are you going through? How can we collaborate? How can we do handoff?" Was a very powerful experience. And I know that the cohort's written into the plans for this year. And I just really want to speak in support of that, as well as express my incredible gratitude to you guys for continuing to support the work of the Boys and Girls Club. We appreciate your partnership in everything that you do with us. And we know it makes our organization better to have you as one of our partners and really our warmest and deepest gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, that ends the public forum for this item. I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
I'm totally in favor of the recommendations from the subcommittee. I'm proud to be part of a community that cares so much and that is working collaboratively. This idea of the cohort, I thought, was wonderful. I think mental health services are sorely needed on the coast. And I think this grant program helps that. So I'm on board with it very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Brownstone.
Thank you. Well, I and the mayor were on the subcommittee. And, you know, sometimes it's difficult to figure out, you know, we have a set amount of money and how to distribute it. And everyone who submitted a request, we really appreciate it. And we learn from the folks who submit those requests. Sometimes if it's a new request, we consider adding some seed money to see how that program might work out. And also, this cohort is a brilliant innovation and way of organizing and having best practices and collaboration so the different providers can learn from each other, get great ideas where they might be able to actually share resources instead of competing for resources, and also to maybe get help with grant writing. Sometimes you can write a joint grant, maybe with one group has a little more experience but realizes there's a lot of value with another organization. So I really appreciate all the work that Julissa and other folks on staff did on working on this collaborative approach. I want to speak specifically about mental health services. And I know my fellow council members have often said how critical that is to prioritize mental health services, especially for underserved communities. And I was really actually glad that we had, I think it was Annie Barons, who called in from Stanford. I work for Stanford Healthcare. And to have someone call in from Stanford and say that the ALAS program, just to repeat what she said, has one of really groundbreaking immigrant childhood mental health services. Groundbreaking. So much so that many folks from Stanford and outside of Stanford are being brought in to learn from the ALAS model. So having, and we hear of the, I mean, the amount that we're giving here is barely enough to cover mental health services for an underserved community that during COVID, I think you all remember, the number of, the number of deaths among Latino populations was way above all other, any other group. And it took a while to get the right services out to that community. And we had folks go out to the farms, finally to get folks vaccinated. We're also hearing every council session about the pressure folks are under. Many people living under very crowded conditions, folks who don't have health insurance. So for me, mental health services, what it really does is provide folks who are in serious situations. And by providing mental health services, we proactively keep from some of those situations from becoming emergency situations, which are even more expensive. So it's a great, I think it's a great proactive way to spend money. I think some, I understand there might have been some concerns about the $250 per session. I've done my own benchmarking with some nonprofit mental health services in Berkeley, where I know folks. And I'm sorry, but that's definitely within the range of what those nonprofits provide. And some of them do that by getting a balance of folks who have insurance with those who don't. Especially when you're trying to find experienced psychologists who have experience and bilingual experience in immigrant childhood, immigrant populations, especially with children, their services can be even more expensive. So frankly, if anything, you know, we allotted less than was asked for, $35,000 instead of the $50,000 for ALAS. If anything, I'd like to add $10,000 more in and make it a total of $310,000 this year, if possible. That's how strongly I feel about it. So, thanks. That's it.
Councilmember Reddick.
Yes, I'm going to give a little bit of an alternative view here. I think all the organizations that you're recommending for funding are highly deserving. I totally support their missions. I totally understand the need for mental health services. In fact, it's really hard to come by mental health services, no matter who you are in this county, the Bay Area, California, and in this country. We're overrun. It's a crisis, especially among young people. But when we established this program, I thought we were kind of clear on the principles underlying our community grant program. We're a small community. We don't have a lot of money to spend. And one of the principles we agreed on several years ago is that we would not fund overhead. That our job is not to help organizations expand, to hire people, to buy computers, and all that sort of stuff. It's to support programs and activities. And sometimes for a project or program, it's buying, you know, supplies and, you know, allowing some take on the grant for project management and overhead, maybe up to 15%. But not to hire staff, where we're creating a dependency on the city in the future to pay for that staff on a repeat basis, paying their recurring costs on a repeat basis, when in fact, if, you know, if we're hard-pressed financially, then we become the ones firing that staff, essentially. So I think managing public money accountably, I think that was the right policy decision to make in terms of our grant program. So while I'd like to support activities that support mental health, there are three grantees that want to use their money to hire staff, and I'm very reluctant to go that route. I'd like those three, I think it's ALAS, El Centro, and Coast Pride, you know, to go back and find a way that we can support you for the amount of money you're asking for, but in recognition that it's really not our job to hire staff for local organizations. And we could get into the argument, should the city be funding mental health services at all, when it's really the county's job and they have a very large budget for it, et cetera. But for me, the more important thing is finding a way to support you so that you're not dependent on us for your livelihood. All these organizations need to become more sustainable on their own, both through fundraising and for funding from the levels of government whose mission are mission-critical for that purpose. So I can support asking those three to go back and to re-scope the projects in a way that has us not funding staff, paying for a portion of staff for the delivery of service, but not actually, you know, paying, you know, salaries. Overhead is salaries in computers and office furniture and things like that. I don't think that's the right place for us to be. So I want to support them. I want to give them the money they're asking for. But I want to make sure we're not creating, you know, a recurring dependency on our public money when we might not be able to afford it next year. So I wanted to put that out there for my fellows and hope that you're understanding, you know, where I'm coming from here. Happy to discuss it.
Okay, I guess my, my reading on this is that, yes. Initially, when we decided to develop the program, it was with the idea that we would not be hiring staff for different nonprofits, that that's their job, but that we would be supporting them. I think that this year has been an abnormal year. It's been a year of stress. It's been a year where the need for mental health access has become so apparent, something that we didn't know about a couple of years ago. Not that mental health issues weren't apparent a couple of years ago, but they weren't as extreme or as, at least as visible as they are right now. So I would like to say that I am happy to shift our focus for this one year to say, "This is an anomaly. Let's try to get these organizations up doing the kind of work with mental health that they want to do." And then next year, when we look at the grant program, we will look at it in the way that it was originally conceived. We will not be expanding them. We will not be supporting their employees' salaries. So that's, that's my sense, is that we could take a break from being so strict with, with what we originally decided and say, "Times have changed. We need to go along with the change. We need to shift our priorities and accommodate it." That's all. So.
Well, you know, if you want to have language in the resolution that says this is one-time money, you know, with the message being, "Don't come back next year asking for staff salaries." It's your responsibility to come up with the money to create the infrastructure for your organization. If you can't support infrastructure for your agency to do your mission, then, you know, you've got other problems. But I can only support this if we make it clear in the resolution itself that this is one-time money. You know, that's where I have to go.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Yeah, I don't know if I could actually agree with your perspective, respectfully. You know, if we were to go into an audit, carefully audit each one of these organizations that we've continued to fund at past levels, it's hard to imagine that no money goes to overhead in exact percentages. We could check that out more carefully, but to me, that's not reality. Well, I, we're asking for hours, more hours to be available. We're paying for more hours to be available. So some, you know, an organization like ALAS, they have a number of psychologists. They're not full-time. So in order, it's, for mental health services, it is not just providing the cost for food that some services provide or clothing. It is experienced counseling services. And I'm sorry, if we say that it's so important to basically save lives and keep families together, and you've got a Stanford person calling in and saying, "This is groundbreaking work." My feeling is that this investment will pay for itself many times over because it will attract more money and more grant writing for organizations like ALAS so they can scale to the needs out there. So there's a lot of different ways to look at it. And, and no, I don't want to say, you know, "We're not going to fund them again" and put some resolution in like that. I'm sorry. I won't support that. I think this money is drastically needed. If anything, I apologize that we can't put more money into all of these organizations. It's true. We're not a full-service city. But these are some of the most trying times. And mental health services, you know, every dime we contribute here, you know, will prevent either another suicide, a family breakup. I can't imagine anything that's more, that's not as equally as urgent than all these other services we're fully funding. So it's fine if we respectfully disagree, but that's how I feel about it.
Well, you know, basically, I think funding counseling, I think that's a county function. County mental health. They have, that's their mission, right? It's, what, what part of that is our mission, I believe, when we're talking about mental health, is, you know, providing city services in a way that support health in general. I mean, we talked about during our priority discussion that, you know, it's health in all things, right? And we do that by adequately funding parks and recreation activities, family programming, keeping up our infrastructure. So, you know, not just dealing with the symptoms of crisis, but creating a community that supports health and that supports mental health. And that, you know, I don't think we're spending enough money on parks and recreation or on the senior community. For instance, they'd like to play pickleball. So I don't think counseling services are the entire answer when we're talking about mental health. And we've come up with a division of labor here, where the county is the mental health agency. And we're the city that provides a lot of other, you know, social equity and community building. So, you know, I don't want to put money into counseling services in a manner that makes our, supporting our other missions, like parks and recreation and other sort of community-building activities, at risk because we don't have enough money. So I'm trying to be careful with our money here and also to support these organizations. So I just want to send a message saying that I don't think the grantees should go forward relying on us on an annual basis to pay their salaries. I think that's the wrong approach. I think there's a way to support their mission and to support their mission using I think there's a way to support their mission and to support their mission using what we already have going in here as a city and to do a better job at that, that supports overall health. So I'm not targeting these organizations. What I'm saying is, we need a rational approach to spending our money. And yes, maybe one more year doing this on a crisis basis, you know, makes sense. But I don't want us to set up an expectation that in the future they can rely on us to pay their salaries. I think that's the wrong approach.
Can I respond? I'm happy to advocate with the county to provide more money for ALAS specifically, for mental health services. And if they can provide that money, we can, if we can, and if we can influence them more to provide more money so that we wouldn't have to provide this, that's great. But it's not happening now. And the county doesn't have enough money because the state has cut its budget 20 billion, and the county has to provide for mental health services for the entire county.
Yes, and ALAS is getting some of the county money this year.
Yeah. Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you while you were speaking. So we are also responsible, when the county can't meet the needs for our community, to help meet the needs for our community. So we are trying to meet the needs for folks here. We have a very large farmworker community here, which doesn't exist in the rest of the county. And the county knows of our needs, but yet they haven't provided more money. So I think we can have more conversations with them. We have good representation now on the board of supervisors, and I think we have, might have more sympathetic ears for folks who have, you know, set up their offices, offices here. We have a number of agencies that our current supervisor has set up. So I think we, we will perhaps have more success. But right now, the need's not being met. And we're also on our budget committee here, so I don't think anyone is more concerned about saving money and putting it into reserves than both of us are. So, but to me, this is a existential pressing need that we have. So again, I respect your opinion, but we can differ. That's fine.
Councilmember Raabach, do you have anything more to add?
I essentially agree with Robert. I don't see a tremendous difference, frankly, between supporting an organization's goals and, and hiring people that will do what that organization does. And I think the need is great. I think the total budget of 300,000 is not exorbitant. And to say that this will create a, a culture of dependency doesn't make a lot of sense to me. This is the year, the, the need is great, and I support the recommendation of the subcommittee in, in paying for these services.
Thank you. Yeah, I will just end by saying that it's a philosophical difference. It comes out of the definition of what a grant program is. It, it, it is about how we decided three years ago that we started this program, five years that we started this program, what it would, what the point was, why we were doing it. And I think back then, when we started, we knew that we had nonprofits that were out there that were desperate to, to continue offering services. We are not a full-service city, but we're a city with a lot of heart. And I think that we're not talking about a huge amount of money when you look at it in, in, in light of our entire budget, certainly. And we're not talking about a lot of money for each, each of these individual organizations in terms of what their total budget is. So whatever we can do, and if we can do it within the 300,000, I am very happy with that, and I am fully supportive of it. So that's my opinion. If there's question, perhaps we could ask for a vote. May I have a motion?
I, let's see, I move that we receive the applicant recommended, funding recommendations from the CSFA Grant Program Subcommittee, determine final funding allocations for fiscal year 2324, and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to finalize and execute agreements as listed in Exhibit A for the Committee Services Financial Assistance Program for FY 23 through 24.
Second.
I have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Raabach?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I make a quick comment before we, a couple of quick comments before we wrap up? First and foremost, I want to just recognize Jalisa Acosta and Karen Decker and our consultant Erica Wood for their incredible work on this program. I was part of the team that started this five years ago, and we've come a long way. It started out rough, and I think we've done some really great work to improve it. Of course, it had to respond during COVID, during the, during the pandemic, and now it's, it's shifted because of the recovery that we're in. And we look forward to seeing it evolve in the future and hopefully to support other types of nonprofits. We have a lot of other nonprofits in the community that also would benefit from this funding. And, and so I think one, one thing that I took away from the discussion is how important it is each year to take a fresh look and make sure that we're providing the right information to the applicants and supporting them. And I think there's been great work that's been done. This is challenging work. It's really a feel-good thing, but as you see, it's really, really hard because this is a community that really, you know, we've got great government services here, but man, our nonprofits carry a huge load in this community to serve everyone. And you see it here tonight and, and in the community. And I think it's been said, we'd love to just have enough money to just make everybody's wildest dreams come true. I mean, that, we know that every dollar that goes to these nonprofits goes towards really, really important things in the community. And so the challenge of picking and divvying up this money is really, really hard. It's, it's, it's hard for staff. I know it. And it was kind of nice to be on this side of the table this year. So I really appreciate Jalisa and the team for their work. And, and also, I just recognize the challenge it is for council to make these tough decisions. But, you know, I know our, our nonprofits appreciate it, and will continue as staff to work to make sure this grows and evolves and is, is a great program for years to come.
Thank you. And, and I just want to add one more thing. Last year, I think it was, that Councilmember Reddick came up with the idea that we have all of these nonprofits that may be doing the same work or duplicating work and not cooperating. And the idea of the cohort came into being. And that was something that was a shift in the way we are doing business. So this year is different from the way it has been. Next year will be different as well. But there we go. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think the, yeah, I think the cohort part of it was really critical, and I'm glad it's, it's moving forward. One thing you might look at is sharing information about how to apply for grants as well and making sure that people understand, you know, the purpose of the grants and supply their 990s. I think we should get 990s every single year because everybody shifts and it gets us, you know, a good view of what the need is as well. So I think we're improving it every year, and I trust will continue. So thanks to staff.
Yeah, and I think staff has been largely responsible for encouraging the cohort side of the program and for developing it and working with the nonprofits to make it a useful, worthwhile thing. So thank you, staff.
If I could just add one comment, we put a lot of heart and love into designing the agendas for the cohort because we want the meetings to be meaningful and informative.
No, I liked the report that Sandy Winter gave about, you know, the, the extra consulting hour and, you know, having somebody from the outside, you know, come in to work on the capacity issues. I think that's great.
Okay, we are now moving on to our legislative advocacy update.
Robert would like a tip.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we take a five-minute break? Everybody back here by 9:26.
That's six minutes.
No, that's five minutes according to that clock. Is seated. We are resuming, and we will move ahead with our legislative update.
Thank you, Mayor Penrose. We're happy to have Andres Ramirez, our lobbyist from Townsend Public Affairs here, who will do a mid-session ledge update.
Thank you, Jessica, and good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable council members, Mr. City Manager and staff. Andres Ramirez with Townsend Public Affairs. Pleased to be here with you all tonight. And because I know it is getting a bit late, I'm going to try to keep this relatively brief, but still comprehensive. So for today's legislative update, we're going to have a little bit of a state legislative overview, talk about some of the priority bills with formal positions that we have taken, talk about the state budget and an update on that, and then a little bit of an update from Washington, D.C. with specifics on the federal appropriations process. So a couple of key dynamics right now with the state legislature. As I've mentioned previously, we're in the first year of a two-year legislative session. We have a massive change-up in that we have a new Assembly Speaker, Mr. Robert Rivas. Speaker Rivas is, you know, he represents the Salinas area, parts of the Central Coast, a little bit of inland. He has a lot of shared policy priorities that the city of Half Moon Bay and yourselves as council members have. So it's a really, really exciting spot. You know, with, with the speaker change, we've already seen a couple of leadership changes. We have a new Assembly Majority Leader and Assembly Member Isaac Bryant. And then some things we can expect likely at the beginning of 2024, but maybe a little bit later this year, once the legislature gets out of session, are some other major committee chairmanship or chairwomanship changes. So those things are yet to come. Policy committee hearings are all done for the most part. Right now, the focus, once they return from summer recess, which they will do on August 14th, is going to be the Appropriations Committee, so weighing the fiscal impacts of bills, and then actual floor votes. As I mentioned, the state budget passed. There were a number of budget trailer bills which further implement the prerogatives, priorities, and flush out the specifics of the things that were funded in the main budget bill. And those all passed, so we actually have a budget. But as I've mentioned previously, because the tax filing deadline was extended until October, there's going to be revenues that, and specifics about revenues that the state did not know about. So we are still expecting maybe some cleanup trailer bills later in 2023, maybe even early 2024, to amend the main budget bill. And as I mentioned, legislature is going to work from August 14th till September 14th, and then the governor then has one month from that date to sign or veto legislation. Now, as I mentioned, I'm not going to go over every single bill that we have taken a formal position on, but I am going to go over a select number of bills. First of all, all of these are still in play, and these are some of the priority bills making their way through the legislative process. First of all, ACA 1 by Assembly Member Aguilar Currie. What this would do is it lowers the necessary voter threshold from what is currently a two-thirds supermajority down to 55% to approve local geo-bonds and special taxes specifically for the development of affordable housing and, and this is a key portion, and public infrastructure projects that are associated with that. And it could be a multitude of different infrastructure projects that are important when you increase housing, increase a constituency, and you need them to have actual, you know, things to do around the community and key services. So this is...
Does the public infrastructure project have to relate to the local housing?
Not directly. And so there is a, there is a list, and it's stated explicitly in the language of what constitutes a public infrastructure project, and I'm happy to share that with you.
Including but not limited to?
Exactly.
Sorry. Including but not limited to is frequently put in bills to give you wide flexibility, no?
Correct. You know. So, you know, this is something we have worked closely with the author and her staff on in the years past, and she's been committed to continue fighting the good fight. It went through its first policy committee last week, and because this is a constitutional amendment, it has different deadlines than a standard bill. So we were there to express our support for the bill, and I saw the Assembly Member and her Chief of Staff in the hallway after, and she expressed very sincere thanks to the council for the position. Next, AB 1319 by Assembly Member Wicks. What this does, it is, is that it enacts targeted modifications to the state law governing the Bay Area Housing and Financing Authority in order to maximize the benefits that this can deliver to the region's residents at no cost to the state. These changes would provide the Bay Area with additional tools to lower housing development costs for the purposes of developing and expanding housing options, particularly affordable housing. This is something that the city's taken a support position on. We've been in all the committees to express that support. And I was actually on a call with the lead advocate for ABAG and MTC earlier today, and similar things. She was just very, very grateful for the city's active role in the legislative process and being there and expressing the support because that goes a long way to hear from the local governments on these policy items. Assembly Bill 1420 by Assembly Member Berman. So currently, there are multiple instances where the Department of Justice, their compliance units will see and witness serious violations, such as finding an assault weapon or evidence of assault weapons for sale, but they can't sort any citation because it's beyond the scope of their authority. So what this bill would do is it would ensure that the Department of Justice has the authority and tools they need to adequately enforce the existing firearm violation laws. You know, as most know, California firearm laws are strong, but, you know, this is kind of that enforcement mechanism. And so this is something we've supported from the beginning of the process when he introduced it. And it's right, it's been making its way through the process, and it's standing before... it's right, it's been making its way through the process, and it's standing before the Senate Appropriations Committee. Expect a hearing probably in the first two weeks when they return from recess. AB 1519 also by Assembly Member Berman, also related to firearms. This bill would ensure that potential firearm purchasers are aware of both the benefits and risks of owning and bringing a firearm into the home, as well as know about life-saving firearm laws in California. So the bill does this by expanding what is covered on the firearm safety certification test and requires that the FSC applicants receive a study guide with this information prior to the test. This has actually made it all the way through all of the policy and fiscal committees, and it's on the Senate floor. So this is an item that could be taken up quite early on when the legislature returns, and then after that, it would just go back for a concurrence vote and be sent to the governor for his consideration. Now to the Senate bills. Senate Bill 4 by Senator Weiner, and I know one of the commenters or the call-in folks mentioned this earlier, that the city has supported. What it does is it would make building affordable housing easier, quicker, and cheaper for faith-based institutions and nonprofit colleges that want to do so on their land. So many of these are, you know, already community anchors. So this would help them build stable, safe, affordable housing for local residents, families, and open the doors to some, you know, higher-resourced areas. And again, this is something we've supported, and it's pending consideration in the Assembly Appropriations Committee. Now Senate Bill 423, also by Senator Weiner. This is one of the more contentious bills in the state legislature this year. You know, the senator has always had really good intentions with this legislation, but unfortunately, with this particular bill, there are some flaws that could result in some, you know, potential detrimental effects for communities. So specifically, what this bill does is it extends and expands by right approval of housing, both affordable but also market-rate multifamily housing projects pursuant to SB-35, which was a bill he passed in 2017. It does a couple of main things within that. So it extends the sunset date from 2026 to 2036. It relaxes specified construction labor requirements. It expands to parcels where parking is a permitted use, and it removes the exclusion of the coastal zone entirely. The Coastal Commission has come in, and they were a key opposition witness at the most recent hearing in the Assembly Natural Resources Committee. There's been a lot of negotiation and attempts to broker a deal between the two, between, you know, the author's office and the Coastal Commission. Right now, you know, conversations are ongoing over the summer recess. So even though the legislature's not in Sacramento, the work is very much still at play. The issue with specifics to the city and compliments to the community development team and staff are really helping, you know, understand what the issues are for this particular community so we can advocate and hopefully get to a position where we no longer have to have, be opposed, is that the specified affordability levels stated in the legislation don't work statewide due to high variation of area median income. So what, you know, effectively this could result in is just market rate units being developed where affordable units could otherwise be built. And the city's done, been a really good actor in doing more than its fair share in trying to develop affordable units. So we almost kind of feel like this is, you know, the feeling is that this could just be doing the wrong thing, an unintended consequence of how the legislation is currently drafted. So I've had a couple meetings with the senator's housing staffer to discuss this amongst other items that we have listed in our letter of concerns. And one of the things we have already had success in brokering a deal with his office on is to secure amendments to ensure that developments aren't going to be located in certain high fire severity zones or proximate to certain high fire severity zones. So there's more work ahead. We've already got one small win in there, but nonetheless, a significant one. And conversations, as I mentioned, are continuing over summer recess and will continue throughout the rest of legislative session. And the last bill I'll mention is Senate Bill 567, also a bill that I know one of the callers brought up by Senator Durazo. So what this does is it responds to the growing abuses of the Tenant Protection Act, which was enacted in 2019, by making modest changes to close very easily exploitable loopholes and providing for meaningful enforcement to ensure the promise of this law is realized. Specifically, this bill is going to do a few things. It's going to provide greater specificity around allowable no-fault just causes for eviction to address the abuse of these provisions. It's going to enhance tenants' ability to defend themselves in eviction cases by requiring that landlords must strictly comply with the Tenant Protection Act. And then it's going to expand both public and private enforcement of that act.
Andres, can you go back there?
Yes.
Yeah. What's gross rental rate increases? What's that about?
So the gross, that's just what that's talking about, and this is purely the title of the bill text. So sometimes what is in the title of the bill text is not indicative of anything that the proposed law or bill is actually going to change. So it's just, this could, in this instance, just be a wonky thing.
It's not a rental control.
No, no, not at all. That's a good question, though, because it does get very confusing with legislative council drafting and making the titles. So now on to some more fun stuff. A state budget update and some of the 2023 funding wins that we have had thus far. So as you all know, despite a very difficult budget year at the state level, we were able to partner with our state legislators, Senator Becker and Assembly Member Berman, to advocate for and secure funding for the planning and development of affordable housing projects in the city of Half Moon Bay. So this includes direct allocations to the city in the amount of 1.25 million for coastside farmworker housing development, another 2 million directly to the city for planning and development of affordable housing, and then there's even another 1.25 million going to San Mateo County on top of our direct funding for affordable housing development. So some of the uses that were actually listed in this, in the letter that we had used to advocate, include for 555 Kelly, 880 Stone Pine Road, and some other items. So really, really great, very exciting, as always, just massive credit to Senator Becker and Assembly Member Berman, because they really, really, you know, fight the good fight over in Sacramento, and they're tremendous partners, and their entire staffs are very incredible as well. So we're lucky to have a great relationship with them. I like to think I do a little bit, but it's all, it's all for the, it's all their work. It's all their work. So this money, as it's written in the Budget Bill Junior, which is Assembly Bill 102, it's going to pass through the Housing and Community Development Department. So similar to how we saw it for Carter Park and the funding that was secured by Assembly Member Berman back then, we can expect HCD to begin reaching out and implementing that formal process of fund transfers at the end of this year or even the very beginning of 2024. So that is a process that's stayed true to how it's been over the past couple of years. General state budget update. I'm not going to hit on all of this at all, but basically, the key theme here is that lots of important funds with regards to homelessness, housing, public safety, infrastructure, and climate change were maintained that could have easily been cut this year due to the budget deficit, but thanks to some smart budgeting, the legislature, the governor's administration, Department of Finance, the LAO, they were able to shift funds around, defer funding, borrow, do things they needed to do to keep key programs intact. One thing that's really, really important that I think is important to iterate is that budget bills are not statutory. So, you know, when the governor signs this after the legislature passes it, this isn't in statute. The money is not guaranteed. Everything in the budget can be clawed back by the Department of Finance and others, and we've seen this in past years. So this is why it's really important to continue to keep the pressure on the legislature and the governor and his administration to maintain funding amounts that were implemented in the budget, especially when it comes to key priorities like addressing homelessness, behavioral health, housing, because there may come a time where, you know, the Department of Finance sees we're in the hole again, and they're going to urge the administration to claw that funding back.
Well, isn't it key to actually, when you get that money, to actually spend it? It's when you don't spend your money or don't spend it fast enough where they want to claw back whatever remains, you know?
Exactly.
So it's really important for us to kind of be shovel-ready, you know, ready to permit, ready to build. That's really important. It's use it or lose it.
Exactly, exactly. But, you know, great compliments to you all as council members and to your awesome staff, because you guys have always been good about being ready when the money comes, so. And last little bit, another exciting tidbit. Fiscal year '24, federal appropriations. I do want to mention that, you know, while I'm the one here presenting to you all, I have an entire team that works alongside me in our Sacramento office and over in our D.C. office and in our other offices as well. So this is not a one-man show. We have a lot of folks, you know, marching up and down every day in Capitol Hill to advocating for you all. And so the House and Senate, they've begun releasing their respective appropriations subcommittee bill markups. The House already did theirs with the Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development markup, and we were able to secure in partnership with your Congresswoman, a million dollars for the East Side Parallel Trail South Project. It did make it into the actual bill text. So there's another million there coming from the feds. Yeah, it's worthy of a clap, definitely. But this is not the end of the road. If trends continue as they have over the past several years, when they brought back appropriations on the federal level, it's very difficult, once we've made it to this stage, for the funding to be pulled out. So if they're going to continue with, you know, earmarks, as they're called, at all, it's very, very likely that this funding is going to happen and it's going to be signed into an appropriations omnibus by the president. So very, very good sign. And it was, it was great because earlier this evening, I was in contact with the Congresswoman's legislative director, and he actually sent over a very nice letter that I'm due to forward to you all, just thanking you all for your work and your partnership and that the Congresswoman's going to continue fighting for it as they do consolidation with the Senate, because that's the next steps in the process. They've done the full markup, consolidation with the Senate version of their spending bill, a vote in both houses, and then it's off to the president for his consideration and signature. So it's not the end of the road, but we're in a very, very, very good spot. So yeah, that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions, but, you know, on behalf of myself and the entire team at our firm, we just thank you for the continued partnership and the opportunity to present.
Thank you, and thank you for advocating for us in such an effective manner.
My pleasure.
Will we see you before the end of session again?
Okay. We are moving on to our update on the January 23rd, 2023 mass shooting incident.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Maggie, there isn't a slide for this, and I'll try to keep this brief. I know the time is late, and we've got some public here. I know who wants to speak on the next item. But, you know, it's just really interesting to be sitting here tonight. This coming Sunday marks six months since, you know, the greatest tragedy I think this community's ever faced. I don't want to hash over the details, but we know that we lost seven of our community members, all from very vulnerable farmworker communities, and another severely injured individual in this mass shooting event that happened. I'm pleased to say he's doing really, really well and recovering very, very well. But, you know, this was an incident that affected those eight victims, their families, countless numbers of folks that were witnesses, including children, to this horrific crime, these horrific crimes that took place at these two different farms. And then the community, it was very traumatizing to the community. And, you know, we, as a city, and the county, and the state, and all of our community members, especially our nonprofits, really rallied, and the work was really, really intense coming out of that incident. And it continues today. And so I just wanted to provide a brief update on some of the really important things that have happened and milestones that have happened over the last six months, as well as start to highlight some of the things that are ahead. So if you can indulge me for just a few minutes, I just want to talk about the work that's happened and really highlight the great collaboration that took place between the different government agencies that represent this coastside and serve this coastside and the nonprofits that serve the community as well. The first area I want to just touch on, of course, is the outpouring of financial support. We had a lot of press and a lot of focus on our community in the days and weeks following this tragic event. And several of our local nonprofits, most namely Coastside Hope and ALAS, were able to raise over $700,000 in cash donations to directly support these families and affected individuals. And that money was really crucial, because it could very quickly get from donors to those individuals for the things that they needed and things that you never expected they would need. I know that there were travel arrangements made to take some of the bodies back to Mexico and other places where these individuals had immigrated from, funding to help support their funerals and support their families in making those arrangements, funding to just take care of day-to-day basic needs, you know. These, we had 40-plus individuals instantly displaced from their homes permanently. And although they were able to eventually go back when the crime scenes were cleared to get some of their personal items, they left with nothing. And so this funding that flowed through these nonprofits was able to provide things like fresh sets of clothing for kids that had school the next day or in the coming weeks, diapers, formula, really, really, really basic essentials that these families probably struggled to have anyways and then lost in an instant. And so I just, I want to express our gratitude to all of our nonprofits for their willingness to pivot in an instant away from all the other work that they do to support those that were impacted in these events. The second part of the financial support, of course, it looks longer term, and this is where the city was able to step in. We looked at best practices and received some good advice from other communities that had experienced tragedies like these. And we were able to work with a couple of community funds to set up a direct victims fund, which is a long-term fund that's meant to go directly to the families without any overhead or any service charges, and really look at their long-term needs and try to support them. And to date, that fund has raised another 200,000. So that's almost a million dollars that was raised.
Quick question.
Yes.
Do people still donate? Is the fund still open?
Yes, the Coastside Victims Fund is still open and available, although the Advisory Board that's working on that will be wrapping, I think will be wrapping up that fund in the next couple of months. It's not meant to be open forever. If you want to donate and you can donate, there's two places you can go. You can go to our website, and the homepage banner, it comes up pretty early in it, Coastside Victims Fund. The other thing you can do is go to the Mavericks Community Foundation website. They're the community fund that's helping to make this happen. And of course, the San Mateo Credit Union is providing the financial leadership and backing to move those funds through.
Yeah, I think you can actually drop off donations at the credit union.
That's correct. And I think that can go to any of the locations, but of course, we have a location here right on Highway 1 in the same parking lot as Burger King and, I think, Compass Realty. So please, if you want to donate, it's not too late. And of course, I think, I know that Coastside Hope and ALAS continue to work with these families and individuals and are always an opportunity to support even after the Victims Fund closes. The second thing I want to talk about is just the immense amount of mental health and psychological support and case management that was required and the way it was done, because we were dealing with two distinctly different cultures here. We had our Spanish-speaking immigrants from Mexico and, I believe, Guatemala, and then we, which even culturally, there are differences there. And then we had our Mandarin-speaking Chinese immigrant population that was also working on these farms. on these farms. And that really showed us the support we have both in our community, but especially for the Chinese farmworkers, where we don't have the same kind of infrastructure here. The, the support that came out of San Francisco and from the Bayside, lots of really great organizations that just came, they, they really weren't connected to our community and said, "We want to help," and, and really provide that support and making sure that every single day, these individuals and families have what they need to, to move forward in their lives. And, you know, there's things that you don't think about. I'll just give one example. Most of the families were placed into hotels by the county that first night because they couldn't go home. And you don't think about this, but for most of them, it's the first time they've ever set foot in a hotel, let alone been a guest. And in the morning, you know, the breakfast is out, the waffle maker that we're all used to, and the, the orange juice and the fruit and the bagels, and these, a lot of these individuals stood in the lobby with all that wonderful food in front of them. They were probably very hungry and they didn't touch it. And we realized, some of our staff that were there realized, they don't realize that they can have this food. It's free, it's part of staying here. And even after telling them that, they had to be coaxed into going and, and just partaking of a meal that was part of the stay. And it just made us realize there are so many things that we take for granted in life that in an instant needed to be taught and shared and helped because most of these families lived in meager conditions, as we found, really humble lives, and were thrust into this completely different lifestyle that, you know, they didn't choose. And, and again, I think we think, oh, staying in a hotel, that's great. These families wanted cooking and a place to cook, a place for privacy, a place for their families to have some privacy. And, and it's through the work of the DA, the District Attorney's Office Victims Unit, our nonprofits and our city staff, that these services were provided and really continued to carry through and, and help these folks in their road forward. Along with that, of course, came the housing support that is so important. The county's been really generous to make sure that all of these families have a place to live. Was talking to one of our guests tonight for the, the birthday celebration, a longtime Coastside resident, and, and we were talking about it, and, and, you know, he was fortunate enough to have four furnished units come vacant right before the shooting and was able to take four of these families in. And, you know, this is interim housing, this is not a permanent solution, but, you know, they were able to make the accommodations available. And we, we have lots of these little miracles that happened to make sure that these families had a stable place to live, kids could get to school, people could get to work. These folks were desperate to get back to work. You know, they, they didn't want all this free stuff, they wanted to get back to their daily lives. Along with the housing efforts that took place on, on the short-term basis, on the midterm basis, as we've heard tonight, there's been a lot of really great work on looking at long-term solutions. It's been a priority for this council to provide affordable housing to those in need here on the coast, and it's been really, really challenging over the years. And, you know, it's sad that an event like this sparked something, but it did. And we, we got the attention of our state and federal legislators, and we see there is money coming to help, not just financial support, but also legislative support. We were able to work with the Coastal Commission to get their support to find more streamlined ways to get housing built to support these, these families and many, many others that are in similar conditions that they were living in. We'll talk later tonight about the efforts taking place at 880 Stone Pine and the, the hopes for that property. Obviously, the 555 Kelly Project, which was already underway before this incident, the value and the importance of it was just heightened. And there's a few other really great efforts underway that we hope to be able to share with the community as, as they move forward. When, when it comes to real estate, we don't want to share too much and, and compromise deals, but there's some, there's some deals being made out there right now that's going to open the door for more affordable housing in our community. And with the funding of the state and the federal government, it's going to really move these things forward more quickly. So we're really, really excited. We'll talk more about one of those opportunities, 880 Stone Pine, later tonight. And again, just grateful for the county's support and the, the tireless work of staff. I want to, we, we don't like to single people out here, but I do want to single out three of our staff that absolutely just overextended themselves over the last several months, and that's Jalisa Acosta, who you heard from tonight, Karen Decker, and Mike Noche, our Housing Coordinator. They, they worked round the clock for weeks and weeks and weeks, gave up vacations and time off and family time because the mission to support these families was the most important thing. And I'm just grateful for our incredible staff that are willing to dedicate it. And, and I singled the three of them out, lots of our staff really stepped up. Those three just, I think, really need to be recognized for their efforts on, on that part. The last piece of this, which I think is also really important long-term, is, you know, we, we recognized that something we knew was happening, but I don't think had a real grasp on, was the poor conditions that many of these farmworkers were living in. There were very, very extreme poor, extreme conditions that happened at these two farms. But if it's happening there, we know it can be happening in other places. And so not only did the city and county coordinate to red-tag those farms and make sure that nobody was living in those conditions there again, the county has set up what they call the San Mateo County Farmworker Safety Task Force, which is a coordinated effort of county and other agencies and the city to develop a plan to go systematically through all of the farm and ag properties here on the coast side and throughout the county, but most of those are on the coast, and identify poor conditions and work with farmers and property owners to correct those before they get to a place where they have to be red-tagged and more families are displaced. I'm, I'm pleased to say that those, those efforts have really moved forward, and to date, I don't believe they've had to red-tag anything. They've had to yellow-tag a few properties and then develop plans outside of the city limits to make improvements. The city inspections will be happening soon, but there were some county properties that were identified as being at higher risk. And so we'll continue to report back to you all as those efforts move forward, and we expect that some of the in-city inspections to happen over the next couple of months. Ultimately, the goal is to ensure that all of our residents, including these very vulnerable farmworker populations, have a safe and healthy place to live, to raise their families, and to pursue their hopes and dreams like the rest of us are able to do. And again, it's, it's really sad that an incident like this is the impetus for it, but I'm, I'm glad to see that it's not in vain and that the work is sustainable and moving forward. The last thing I just want to share is something that came up in our priority setting earlier this year, and we've started to move forward on, and that's a farmworker memorial. We've heard so much about the important role that farmworkers play in our community, and we want to make sure that we honor our, our living farmworkers, those that are serving us every day and making sure we have healthy food to eat and the wonderful agricultural products that we have here on the coast side, and of course, remember the victims of these shootings. And so our staff is pulling together an internal team. We do expect that there will be a lot of community outreach and some sort of community advisory group that helps to identify when and where and how we recognize these members of our community and, and remember the, the work that they do for us. So we're really excited as that moves forward to, to bring that back to council, to get some feedback and keep that information shared with the community, and that should be moving forward very quickly. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. We have a couple of items that are follow-ups to this that we'll take next with action. And again, I'm, I'm humbled to be providing a report like this, but grateful for what we've learned over the last six months, and, and of course, we've seen the best of our community out of the worst of, of, of an incident. Thank you.
No questions, but I have a, a comment. Well, I want to say that on behalf of the farmworker community, as you may know, I do a lot of work with our farmworkers here on the coast. You know, I want to say a thank you to the city of Half Moon Bay, to the coast side, to the nonprofit organizations, you know, that have been supporting the farmworkers for the last years, you know, especially since the, since the pandemic. And then of course, you know, kind of San Mateo, you know, for continuing support the farmworkers. Kind of supervisor Ray Mueller, who continues to show up, you know, we are very grateful for his support. So on behalf of all the farmworkers on the coast, you know, thank you. And then the memorial, that will be a really, you know, appreciated by the community. There's been several comments about plaques with the names of other farmworkers, and the just recognition for the work that they do, even, we have known for many years, and we saw during the floods, nonstop working as well. So that will be greatly appreciated as well.
I just want to say, don't forget about the idea of the farmworker mural. We had talked about potentially a farmworker mural on the side of City Hall or at a different location, and it seemed like a great idea, and that was before the shooting, and I think it's an even better idea now, so.
Okay, thank you for that report, Matt.
Thank you. And so our next item is to talk about an MOU with San Mateo County for the 880 Stone Pine property. Maggie, are you able to run the slides for me? Okay, thank you. Or if there's a clicker, I can do it. Okay, next slide, please. So I, I've given a little bit of the context around why we need affordable housing to support these farmworkers. This is a project that started before, but gained additional urgency and focus and opportunity through the efforts that came out of the shooting. So as a, a little bit of background, just the location that we're talking about tonight is 880 Stone Pine Road. It's, it's in the downtown core, as you see on the map. I know it's a little hard to see on the screen here, but it's a, a property that the city acquired in 2021. We've occupied it for about 15 years, and it's been used as our corporation yard. And, and what a corporation yard is, it's a, it's a very standard thing that cities have. It, it provides a place for the construction and maintenance teams for a city to operate from, to store equipment, stage materials, and do the work that comes mostly out of public works to support a community. And it, it also plays a really important role in emergency preparedness because when you're in the response to an emergency, the city's portion of the response, it's usually around, you know, removing tree limbs, clearing roads, removing landslides, debris, those types of things, and you have to have a place to, with, with space and land to operate from, to move that, those materials and equipment. So this is a really crucial facility for us, and the council recognized it. We were able to buy the property from post that we had used for many years and through a loan from the state, not only make that purchase, but make improvements to really meet the needs of our community. At the time that we made that acquisition in 2021, the council identified this site because we didn't need to use the entire site for the public works purposes, that long-term, we wanted to explore it for housing potentially. It's close to downtown, it's adjacent to other housing, and it, it provided what could potentially be an opportunity site. A big constraint there, of course, in this case, was the financing that we got for this property from the state through the state's infrastructure bank precluded us from building housing or really doing anything else with the remainder of the property. And so it truly was seen as a long-term potential that we would explore and develop a plan for as we paid off the loan and put ourselves in a position where we could do what we want with the property. In 2022, I believe in April, the city got the coastal development permit finalized to start construction on the improvements we needed to make for the corporation yard. As part of that design, we were able to incorporate improvements that could make the property more feasible for housing based on the exploration we had done in the year previous. A lot of that related to the habitat and, and animal life that exists in that area. We have a creek on one side of the property and a decommissioned ag pond on the other, which meant that, that frogs would breed and, and move between those two sites. And so the improvements we built for our corporation yard include a new road that takes a path up and over what we call the wildlife corridor that would provide a safe space for animals to migrate between the pond and the creek safely, which would then allow us to utilize other portions of the property for future projects. As we continued our, our exploration of feasibility of housing on the site, the potential for housing was included in our draft housing element, which was finalized and submitted to the state a few months ago and is in the process of review from the state, and hopefully will be finalized and certified in the next few months. Next slide, please. As we started to explore options for how we were going to support the displaced families from the January 23rd shooting, the county was able to apply for a grant through what's called the Joe Cerna Home Ownership Grant Fund. The Joe Cerna Grant Funds are through the State Human, Housing and Community Development Office, and these are grant funds specifically for supporting housing for farmworkers. We've utilized or are utilizing for 555 Kelly, the rental portion of it, but the, the county wanted to apply for the homeownership piece of it, which can be used for manufactured mobile home housing, which we know is a much quicker way to develop affordable housing at this time. The county applied for a $5 million grant to purchase units, but as part of that, they needed land to build a neighborhood to put these units that they would purchase. And so we worked with the county to explore a variety of sites and ultimately landed on 880 Stone Pine as the most likely and best-suited site for this type of development. Again, it's part of our town center core, which means it's within walking distance of important services like the Coastside Clinic, Medical Clinic, the different nonprofits that we have serving our community, schools, grocery stores, and other amenities that exist in our downtown and where we've really wanted to focus development for, for residential housing. We needed a site that was big enough to build a neighborhood because not only are we ultimately needing to serve on an emergency basis the, the 20 families that have already been displaced, but families that may be displaced through the efforts of the task force that the county's put together as they look at other farms and may have to red-tag other farm housing as they find similar conditions. But also, we know that there's a great need for affordable housing for farmworkers and for our service workers in our community that are really struggling just to pay the rent in the market rate housing that we have here. We continue to investigate the feasibility at 880 Stone Pine, and of course, it being city-owned gives us site control, which eliminates a barrier of having to negotiate and purchase the property and get it entitled for this purpose. Next slide. So here's an overview of the property and what we consider the housing opportunity site. So in the upper right-hand corner of the slide is the design and what is mostly completed, which is our new corporation yard for public works. It includes fencing. We, we've had security issues there, so one of our primary focuses was to fence off the property and protect it. We have, of course, the wildlife corridor that is between the corporation yard and an opportunity site. And then on the lower right-hand corner of the slide is an area that, as part of our purchase from post, has been set aside for protecting, protecting the creek habitat and the future, hopefully, of some sort of a trail. This site is part of what is considered a potential for what the Bay to Sea Trail oppor, opportunity where a trail could come down from skyline, connect over the hill, and then come all the way down and ultimately to the coastal trail, where people could travel by bicycle or on foot all the way through the, the peninsula. That area is also fenced off and protected to protect the wildlife and make sure that they're channeled up through the wildlife corridor. The remaining area is what we consider the housing opportunity site that we're exploring. It constitutes about four acres. Most of it is on the south side of our access road that goes into our corporation yard, but there is room on the north side as well, below the old ag pond, that it could be utilized for housing as well. Next slide, please. So as we've worked with the county, we've had several community outreach meetings, we've collected a lot collected a lot of community input, we are doing feasibility studies and research based on the work we were already doing and feedback from the community and the concepts that we've started developing for a neighborhood here. We are far enough into this process now where we really need to come to an agreement with the county about what this would look like long-term. And so we've negotiated an MOU, which was attached to the staff report tonight. Just a few of the terms that are in this MOU. It would only carry through December 31, 2024. We believe that that's enough time to finalize evaluating the feasibility of this property and ultimately develop it if that is what we choose to do. It ensures that there's cooperation and collaboration between the city and the county on the potential development of 880 Stone Pine. Any development there under the current model would be a county project and a county development. But of course, the city plays a crucial role, working with the community on permitting and making sure that whatever is developed and designed there is compatible with our community. It talks about the cooperation on the receipt of the Cerna grant and any other funding that might be achieved for this project. As you saw, we've received $1.25 million from the state that could potentially go towards supporting this project. One of the most important things that this MOU does is it spells out the terms of a refinance of the loan we have with I Bank. As I mentioned, the funding source for the purchase of this property does not allow us to build housing until the loan is paid off. And so the county has offered up an opportunity for us to refinance with them, to clear those restrictions and have us pay the remainder of the loan to the county, which would then allow us to develop the site for housing or other purposes. And then as part of that, and I'll talk in more detail, the future transfer of the actual housing opportunity and development site to the county so that as they move forward with the development, they have full site control and can complete the work on the project. It also helps to reduce our financial burden in paying off this loan, and the next couple of slides will show you that. So next slide, please. The current loan that we have, I want to just kind of compare where we're at and what we're talking about. The current loan with I Bank is for $3.2 million. $2.1 million of that, almost $2.2 million, went towards the acquisition of the property from Post. The other $1.1 million is funding that we used along with city general funds to do the development of the corporation yard to create that facility. The timing of this loan was really great. It was at a time when the interest rate was extremely low, at 2.5% fixed over 30 years, which is an incredible rate and something we were really proud of being able to get. It leaves us with about $164,000 a year in annual debt service. Of course, it comes with that restriction. It precludes housing development or development of anything else on this property while we are paying off that loan. Next slide, please. The initial loan that the county has offered us would fully pay off the loan with I Bank, so it'd be a $3.2 million loan. The county can't meet the state's rate from that time. The best that they can do, it's actually a little less than what I show here on this slide, it's a little over 3.1%. And it's based on their investment fund because they're taking money from their reserves to lend to us, and so they need to at least receive an interest rate that is equal to what they'd be investing at at this time. And that's called the LEAF rate. So 3.2% interest, so an increase in the interest rate. They also can't offer us a 30-year term, and so they've offered us a 10-year term, and then under certain conditions, we could potentially extend it to 15 years. A higher interest rate and shorter term is going to result in a higher annual debt service for the city. Under the initial loan of 3.2 million, they estimated it'd be about $320,000 per year of annual debt service. The other thing that results from the change in the loan terms is the potential savings of about $1 million in interest payments over the life of the loan. So, you know, there's benefits from that standpoint that we can pay off the loan sooner and save money on interest, but it does increase the burden on the city's budget on an annual basis in the short term. The first payment on the loan would not take place until December of 2024, and it would be done similar to our loan with the county on the library project. It would come directly out of our loan, our property tax apportionment each, twice each year, which means it would just be money that wouldn't be coming in as revenue. One important thing I neglected to put on this slide is the collateral for this loan would actually be the library. It would not be 880 Stone Pine. It simplifies the transaction. We have plenty of available, the word always escapes me, equity in the property at the library. We've had it appraised, it's holding its value strong, so there's plenty of equity there, so we would borrow against that equity and then be able to pay off the I Bank loan. We've spoken with I Bank, and they're willing to work with us on an early payoff, which is not typical for them. But given the state's support for this type of use, using property to build housing, they've, I think our state legislators have stepped in and provided some support, and they're willing to work with us on an early payoff that we would initiate as soon as all of this is approved. The next slide, please. The second step of this project would be then to subdivide the property or reallocate the parcels that are on that property and create two separate parcels. One would be inclusive of the ag pond and the creek buffer and path area as well as the corporation yard, and that's the parcel that the city would retain. The other portion would be strictly the housing development parcel, which is about four acres, which would then be sold to the county at their option, but that is the intent at this time. And by selling it to the county, the value of that property would come off the amount we owe under the current loan with the county, thus reducing our debt service to the county going forward. And all of this would be consummated before we even made our first payment. And so ideally, that would happen, and our debt service would be around $270,000 per year. It's approximate, it's worst-case scenario based on the interest rate at this time. One of the other things that they've offered us in this loan is that if the LEAF investment rate has gone down, they will adjust the rate to that lower rate at the time. So the county's been really thoughtful about the burden that this could be on the city and making sure that we're getting the best deal that we can, given the current situation we're in with the state. So again, that first payment hopefully would be consummated after all these loans have taken place, and we'd be paying $270,000 or less, still more than we're currently paying on our loan with I Bank, but ultimately would result in significant savings in interest over the life of the loan. Next slide, please. So our recommendation tonight, of course, I'm happy to take questions and provide any more details that you seek, and I know we have some public comment from our community on this tonight. But we recommend that you authorize the city manager to execute the MOU as it's attached to this and then authorize staff and council to finalize the terms of the loans under the loan terms that have been provided tonight and consummate any other documents that are necessary to refinance, pay off the I Bank loan, and refinance with the county so that we can move forward with this potential project. Thank you.
Thank you. Would council like to hear from the public before discussion? Okay. Do we have any public speakers?
Yes, first speaker is Jack Deворcan.
By way of introduction, I came to this country when I was 36 from the Soviet Union with a shirt on my back and a few boxes of books. Now I'm 70. I never asked the government for a penny and never received one. I never received any subsidized housing, just the opposite. I paid over, way over $1 million in taxes to the government. Arguably, having experienced tyranny for 36 years, I appreciate the freedom that the founders of this country intended to provide more than many people who were born here. I also highly respect the Constitution of the United States and that of the Republic of California. After that, I want to inform you and warn you, warn you, that your affordable housing enterprise is unconstitutional, Article 34 of California Constitution, and will remain illegal until you put it on the ballot and win the majority of the voters here in Heavmon Bay. I also have to warn you that these have to be registered voters, citizens. And if you decide to put it on the ballot, I'll be watching you. And if you decide not to put it on the ballot, I'll be watching you too.
Thank you. Next, we have Beverly Davis.
Yes, my name is Beverly Davis. Good evening. I too work at Stanford University. Anyway, went to an HOA meeting, board meeting last night at Cypress Cove, and our president, who was actually on a, started a committee, it was not available this evening. He would have come and he would have spoken for our association, at least the individuals that are interested. But I volunteered because I've been following these meetings, which I think are really interesting, and I think it's wonderful. You want to house people who need housing. I think it's great. But at the same time, I think there's a level of naivety here because I live, I can see the four acres of property that are going to be purchased by the county. The night of the shootings, I could see the sheriff cars with their red cherries on top, and it was frightening, very frightening. Though I'm not opposed to affordable housing in my neighborhood, I am opposed to, we're told it's the city land, now it's the county's land. So doesn't that change all of the agreements that were made when the land was purchased? That's a question. For you.
We don't respond to questions.
Oh, okay.
You can make an appointment and
Oh, okay, okay.
Or make a telephone call.
Okay. So another concern of mine is we have had trucks coming up and down Stone Pine Road for the last two years, and I'm wondering how you're going to incorporate housing development with a corporate yard and entering at the cul-de-sac where usually it's gated. And it's been gated, I've lived there now for 13 years, and it's been gated every night at end of business. So how is it going to work that all of a sudden those gates are open and you've got the corporate yard road and then you've got, you know, the public going on for the same, you know, area? It's a big concern for me because I know these people who are going to be living in this housing are going to have children, and they're going to have bicycles, they're going to have scooters, they're going to have all kinds of things. So I'm just like trying to envision how that's going to work. And also, our association is also very concerned about the traffic, and they're want to know about the study. And I did read, okay, and I did read that there's going to be an open forum August 17. Will you get together again with Cypress Cove at some point? Okay. Yeah, so that I would, I would hope that that would happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Yo se que ya es tarde y nos queremos ir todos pero este
I know it's late and we all want to go home.
Pero este es un punto que tenemos que ver y que nos interesa. Yo pienso que las personas que están aquí y a nosotros más que nada.
I think this is a point that we really have to take a look at, not only the people here, but other people as well.
Yo se que las personas, como el señor que dijo, que se tiene que votar o que poner en las boletas para que los residentes, ¿quiénes son los residentes? Todas las personas que viven aquí.
So like that gentleman was saying that, you know, on certain legislation, that, you know, who's going to vote on that? So who is it that's going to vote on that?
Nosotros también vivimos aquí.
We also live here.
Nosotros no sabemos de tecnología y a lo mejor no sabemos tanto de leyes.
We don't know much about laws or technology.
Pero poco a poco vamos a aprender.
But little by little, we'll learn.
Ellos se pueden comunicar en next door diciendo que se oponen o que no quieren a la gente cerca de ellos.
All these people can, you know, communicate on next door or whatever, saying that they don't want these people next to them.
Que no quieren viviendas por el tráfico.
That they don't want housing due to traffic.
Porque no quieren vivir con personas como nosotros cerca.
Because they don't want to live next to people like us, close by.
Siempre han hecho y han puesto los mismos puntos. El tráfico, el tráfico porque si es fuera de la ciudad. El tráfico ahora porque si es dentro de la ciudad.
They've always raised these points. It's the traffic because it's in, you know, downtown, or it's the traffic because now it's over here, and it's the traffic because of that.
Sabemos que el tráfico nunca se va a terminar.
We know that there's never going to be end to traffic.
Así que por favor, estos proyectos, yo sé que todo el trabajo que se está haciendo, toda la colaboración de las personas que se están encargando, estos proyectos tienen que enseñarse, a valorarnos también a nosotros.
So with all of these projects, we understand that there's a lot of collaboration and a lot of work to be done, but we want to be valued as well.
Tienen que ayudarnos, nosotros también somos residentes.
You have to help us because we're also residents.
Ustedes están mirando la gran necesidad que hay y que nosotros
You can see the great need that there is.
Que nosotros estamos viviendo. Si quieren que sus residentes tengan una vida mejor como otras personas.
So if you want your residents to have a good life, just like all the others.
Apoyenos en estos proyectos.
Support us with these projects, with our projects. That's all.
Thank you, Rosio. Next, we have Carolina Carvajal.
Muchas gracias. Seguimos aquí con esta polémica.
Thank you very much. We'll continue along with this.
Es triste pensar de que por nuestra condición económica
So it's sad to think that because of our economic situation.
Somos el esclavo más débil de esta cadena.
We're the weakest link in the chain.
Lastimosamente nosotros también pagamos impuestos.
And so we also pay taxes.
Seamos legales o ilegales.
Whether we're documented or undocumented.
Aquí nadie se salva de eso.
Nobody is safe from not paying taxes here.
Y siempre les he dicho, nunca estamos pidiendo hogares gratis.
And I've always said this, we're not asking for free housing.
Simplemente algo que podamos pagar.
Just simply something that we can afford.
Este proyecto habla acerca de poder adquirir una vivienda.
So this project talks about acquiring housing?
¿Quién de nosotros no la quisiera adquirir?
I mean, which, which one of you or us wouldn't like to acquire a housing?
Necesitamos mil viviendas en este momento.
So we need a thousand homes right now.
Eso no es nada.
This is nothing.
Hay una gran necesidad.
So there's a huge need.
Y no creo que nosotros estemos peleando por quien quiera vivir en este momento ahí.
And I don't know any one of us that's fighting to get into this right now.
En este momento está esa necesidad, y si eso puede suplir un poco la necesidad, es importante apoyarla.
So there's a huge need, and if this can somehow make a small dent in it, then this is a priority, this is important.
Sé que no la van a regalar.
I know you guys aren't going to give them away.
Sé que vamos a tener que pagar impuestos de ahí también.
And I know that we're also going to have to pay taxes on that as well.
Aparte de eso, quiero, quiero tocar un punto muy importante.
I really want to touch on an important.
Que personalmente me preocupa.
That personally worried about.
Quisiera saber qué ley nos van parar que a futuro no podamos perder esa propiedad.
So I want to know if there's any laws that in a future time won't protect us from losing these homes.
Ustedes ahorita están aquí apoyándonos.
So all of you are here now supporting us?
Pero quién nos dice que dentro de 15 años, 20 años.
But who knows, in 15 years or 20 years?
Los legisladores que estén ahí no vendan esa propiedad.
Those legislation.
Vendan esa propiedad.
Those people making the legislation might not sell that, those properties.
Y esas personas sean desalojadas en ese momento.
And then all of a sudden, all those people lose their housing in that moment.
Se ve mucho de esos casos aquí, que las ciudades venden las propiedades.
We actually see many cases where cities sell those properties out.
Yo he visto historias de personas que han sido desalojadas, que han trabajado para el gobierno.
I've seen stories of people that have been displaced, that have been working for the government.
No hay ley que los esté amparando ahorita.
So there's no laws that can help us now.
Me preocupa que no creemos leyes para la protección de nuestras viviendas también.
I'm concerned that we don't create laws or legislation that help, help us with this.
Me da miedo que pase una situación y el banco ya no nos quiera financiar y perdamos la propiedad.
I'm fearful that some situation might arise where the bank doesn't support us anymore and we lose our property.
Creo que es tiempo de también pensar cómo nos vamos a resguardar de esas situaciones.
I think it's time for us to come together and think about how we're going to support each other from that happening.
En este momento tenemos un problema por crear el proyecto.
So right now, the issue or the problem is to like create this project.
Imaginémonos a futuro tengamos un proyecto, un proyecto que se venga para abajo.
I mean, let's, let's think about the future where a project can potentially fall.
Es ese mi comentario, muchas gracias.
Those are my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolina. Is there anyone online? Jessica?
No.
Okay, that ends public comment, so bring it back to council.
I'd like to make a motion. Is that okay?
I think Harvey has to say something.
I'm very impressed with the creativity of this MOU. I think you all know that the council and me have been trying to get affordable housing built for farm workers, for essential workers. This project uses the city land, which will be sold to the county, to do what I'm 100% in favor of. I, I believe that the plan is ultimately to have the farm workers get equity in their, in the housing, which is always a good thing. They won't have to be paying rent forever, but they can be owning these mobile homes, and I think that's, that's really a positive thing. I hear about not in my backyard nimbyism, and that's always a problem, but I think the interest of the community, of our essential workers, of our farm workers, far overwhelms any concerns about the issues in the neighborhood. So I'm fully in support of this MOU, and I applaud our staff for coming to terms with a county to do this. Thank you.
I just wanted to address a couple of concerns that have come up. In terms of the concern about the land being used for other purposes that Carolina brought up, I would think that, you know, county ownership actually would, is better than if it was a private owner who could simply sell that land, and I think the county's commitment to affordable housing will, will be sustained over time. So not as concerned about that. I would like to make, there are some concerns stated by folks in Cypress Cove and road usage. So I would ask that, you already mentioned, Matthew, that we arrange a meeting with the HOA at Cypress Cove and hear out the concerns. Bring some maps and let's talk about that and what we can do to allay those concerns. So that would be great. That's it, let's address, I mean, I think all these things can be resolved, everybody's satisfaction, and it'll be a great community and that folks will be able to live together and we'll have everybody's needs met. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't want to dismiss the concerns of neighbors, but we mitigate projects all the time, whether it's through modifying traffic circulation, creating, you know, buffers from resources and, you know, other impacts. You know, the city planning department does that, you know, all the time, and I believe that these concerns can be, can be addressed. I know that for many years, the residents at Cypress Cove wanted nothing there, and yes, it's nice to have nothing around you so that you can look out and see trees and meadows and things like that, and we're lucky to have a lot of that around our community. But housing is a critical need, and housing is a critical need for all members of our community, you know, all, all income groups, especially those who are the most vulnerable to rent increases and high home prices. So I think, I would say that I'm guessing a project is coming to Stone Pine, and hopefully, you know, your concerns can be, you know, addressed. But no development out there, I'm guessing is no option. But I think the council and staff are willing to work with you on mitigating the impacts. That said, I agree with Harvey, I think this is a very creative agreement. I think it addresses the city's concerns in terms of financial accountability and recognizing, you know, our, our cash flow needs, and the county's been very receptive, I think, and very sensitive to the situation. I think the covenants that will run with the property, both because of the grant funding that we're getting from the state and other nonprofits, as well as the county, will protect you. I'm guessing values will go up some because it's intended to be an ownership home where you can build some equity and then I think eventually sell it and get some income from that. But I think it's going to be protected for housing, I'm pretty sure, because of all the things I just said, so I want to reassure you about that. I support the agreement, I think, I want to thank staff for working hard and making sure that it addressed our concerns in our, in our discussions, and I want to thank the city manager for a very concise PowerPoint and for his ability to actually talk without using it, you know, for long periods of time and very deeply on the issue, so thank you.
For me, that was concise. I know, not for everybody, but you know me, so that was concise.
Well, I mean, the PowerPoint was concise, which is how we like it. We want you to talk beyond the PowerPoint, right? So well done, I just want to say. With that, I'd like, be happy to make a motion, if everybody's ready. Oh, you need to comment, sorry about that.
Yeah, enough said. I am, have always been in favor of the project because I am definitely passionate about building affordable housing in our town as often and as quickly and as well as we can. This is an ideal project. It is a neighborhood, it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood with lovely people in it, and people are not going to be in their cars because they're going to be downtown and they're going to be walking to and from their homes, which is just wonderful. Hopefully, we'll get a community garden in there, maybe playgrounds, maybe pickleball, for God's sake. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding, exhibit a the resolution, with San Mateo County affirming general terms and processes for refinance of the city's loan, with California I Bank and outlining city and county collaboration on the design and development of an affordable housing project of up to 50 manufactured homes at 880 Stone Pine Road, and two, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute agreements identified in the MOU to formally initiate early payoff of I Bank loan with a target closing date of October 1, 2023.
Second.
I am honored to second this motion.
If you have a roll call, please. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we are moving on to item 3E, art donation of 1,000 cranes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm very pleased to end your meeting tonight on a very positive and festive note. We do have a couple people online tonight that are part of this wonderful presentation. So tonight I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the 1,000 cranes. I will not take up too much of time because I'd like our speakers to have a few moments to share their thoughts about why this project came to them. Just a brief history, which was in your staff report, but this is actually a picture of the 1,000 cranes and the origami cranes that are made. This was based on a story of a young girl named Sudoku Sasaki, who was 12 years old when she contracted leukemia. According to the Senbaru Zurok, sorry, I'm butchering that, I understand, legend, which said that if you made 1,000 cranes, whatever you wish for would come true. So she set out to make 1,000 cranes. Unfortunately, she did not finish, but her classmates and in turn the rest of her country and peers finished it for her. And so it became an everlasting sign of peace, and today we are celebrating the fact that a group out of San Mateo decided to come together and make this wonderful, wonderful gift for the city of Half Moon Bay to memorialize the victims and the families of the shooting in January, and to offer it as a sign of peace moving forward for our city, to support us. Just to give a tiny bit of background, the organizers of the event were the Organization of Chinese Americans led by Amy Yan, and she has two interns that worked with her, and you'll get a chance to meet them, Danny Craddock and Elizabeth Burz, I'm sorry again if I'm mispronouncing the names, they actually organized an event at the Central Park Community Center in San Mateo where 75 volunteers came together to fold origami cranes. And then they held a second event on July 9th in Menlo Park to string the cranes for us to present, to hang in our city. On May 24th, we took it to the Recreation Commission, who got so excited about it and talked about different ways we could actually highlight this project in the city, especially during the summer, music festivals, maybe make signs, leading people to the library where the Recreation Commission has recommended that we find a spot to, to hang these. I, before we go on to Amy, who's actually on, online, I wanted to share a few pictures from the events that happened. This was the actual installation project creation event at the San Mateo Community Center. As you can see, I shared a simple picture of just the cranes in the middle, but it was truly an intergenerational event, with all ages coming together to make these, knowing that the finished project, project would be coming to Half Moon Bay as a gift. And Amy is actually the woman in the bottom picture next to the woman with white hair. She's standing, smiling. It was a pleasure meeting with her. She, her energy and enthusiasm for this project was wonderful. And then, of course, this was the stringing event on July 9th at the fire station in Menlo Park. So they shared some pictures, and again, another generational effort, and it looks like even some of the firefighters took, took part in this. So if Amy is online, I'd love to give her an opportunity to speak to the council.
Can you hear me? No? Hello?
Yes, Amy, you're on, Amy.
Oh, okay, wonderful, yeah. So, so I am the president of the San Mateo Chapter of OCA, Organization of Chinese American, Asian Pacific American Advocates, and it's a social justice organization headquartered in Washington DC. And both San Mateo OCA and the Self Help for the Elderly were also at the interfaith vigil to support the surviving victims, I mean, surviving farm workers back in, in February. So for OCA's 50th anniversary this year, each local chapter worked on a community service project, and so our youth interns and I brainstorm ideas that could involve both young people and elderly folks, and we came up with this idea for the 1,000 cranes project, and it's been overwhelmingly popular with, with everyone that we've talked with, and they all came to support our project. And we thank the city of Half Moon Bay especially for allowing us to do this project. Thank you to Administrative Services Director Lisa Lopez Frost, Recreation Supervisor Edward Bale, and City Manager Matthew Tridester for their support and for working with us so that we can all work together to, to have healing. So I want to introduce Elizabeth, our high school intern, and also Danny Craddock, who, who will talk about their, their experiences working on this project. Elizabeth, are you there? You can unmute yourself.
Elizabeth, you're muted.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The project of making 1,000 origami cranes was born and became an intergenerational project. Cranes are a symbol of peace and hope. The Organization of Chinese Americans, San Mateo Chapter, and especially their youth, partnered with Self Help for the Elderly at their site at the San Mateo Central Park Community Center for a day of healing and folding cranes. Other people and community organizations also joined in. Kaiser Permanente donated healthy snacks, and Ms. Virginia Chang-Carley, a commissioner on the San Mateo County Harvard Board and president of the Menlo Park Fire Protection Board, the County Behavioral Health, the Office of Diversity, and Menlo Church donated origami paper. Imodium Books staffed a table of children's books. Mental health resources were available in multiple languages and staffed by Sylvia Tang from the county's Office of Diversity. About 75 people of all ages in the cities came that day to fold cranes. We made about 702 hours. Since we did not reach our goal, some people even took paper home and folded it to bring back to our next crane stringing event. We had a couple of crane stringing events in Menlo Park, and we had one at the fire station number one in Menlo Park, set up by Menlo Park Fire Board President Virginia Chang-Carley. Friends and neighbors from Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, Atherton, Redwood City, Foster City, and other unincorporated areas of San Mateo County joined in that day to finish the project. I'll now introduce Danny Craddock. If Danny could unmute, possibly.
Hello?
¿Hola? ¿La gente me oye?
Podemos oírte.
Está bien. Muchos voluntarios han donado su tiempo a este proyecto significativo. La instalación de arte es un recordatorio de que somos una comunidad resiliente y que nos harán sanar juntos. Estamos listos para hangar los cranes en la biblioteca de Halfmoon Bay como memorial a las víctimas de violencia armada y como símbolo de esperanza y paz. Gracias por su apoyo y colaboración en este proyecto. Estamos honrados de trabajar con la ciudad de Halfmoon Bay. Gracias.
Gracias a todos por estar allí y hablar con nuestra Cámara esta noche. Y para avanzar, la recomendación está en la pantalla. Queremos aceptar la donación, afirmar la colocación...
Creo que Virginia querría decir algo. Tuvo su mano levantada. Ella está en línea.
Lo siento, lo disculpo.
Gracias. ¿Todos pueden oírme? ¿Hola?
Sí, podemos. Lo siento.
No te preocupes. Solo quiero decirle gracias al Cámara y al personal de la ciudad por permitirnos incluso hacer esta presentación. Ha sido un tiempo exhaustivo y emocionalmente intentado y esperamos que estos 1,000 cranes, que creemos representan la idea de sanación y uniendo nuestra comunidad y toda nuestra condado juntos, estén en la biblioteca y en la ciudad. Va a ser hermoso allí y les agradecemos la consideración por permitirnos avanzar con esto. Así que gracias a todos.
Gracias, Virginia. Lisa.
Bueno, esa es nuestra presentación y ahora nos gustaría pasar con nuestra recomendación, si la Cámara quisiera.
¿Puedo hacer una motion?
Por cierto, antes de hacer la motion, soy muy familiarizado con la tradición de los 1,000 crane. Devuelve muchos recuerdos de la infancia cuando era un joven en un campamento de verano y participó en el proyecto de crane para terminar el enamoramiento. Así que es bueno ver que vuelven después de tantos años. Así que con eso, me gustaría hacer una motion de que adoptemos una resolución aceptando la donación de los 1,000 cranes creados por la Organización de Chinos Americanas de San Mateo y Self Help for the Elderly en la ejecución del acuerdo de arte público estándar de la ciudad y dos, afirmando la colocación de la escultura en la biblioteca de Halfmoon Bay y tres, autorizando al personal de trabajo público para desarrollar un plan de instalación.
Segundo.
¿Todos en favor?
Sí.
¿Alguien oposito? Gracias a todos mucho por su trabajo duro. Estamos muy emocionados. No puedo esperar a verlo en la biblioteca.
Gracias.
Está bien. Con eso, pasamos a la agenda, a los posibles temas de agenda para una discusión futura. ¿Alguien en la Cámara tiene algo que hablar sobre? Yo participaré en esta reunión. Listo. Esa fue una larga. ¿Dónde están mis llaves?